Church City Planning Commission to order. Before we get going, I will read the opening remote format boilerplate. The meeting for which this agenda has been posted will be held pursuant to and in compliance with the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, specifically Section 2.2-3708.2 and state and local legislation adopted to allow for continued government operation during the COVID-19 declared emergency. All members of the planning commission will be present at this meeting, those who are members through electronic means, and all members of the public are welcome to view the meeting at www.fallschurchva.gov/pc and on Falls Church City Public Television, which is you can see on Cox Channel 11, RCN Channel 2, and Verizon Channel 35. Public comments will be accepted electronically until the end of the public hearing, and you can submit those comments to the email address plan@fallschurchva.gov. Okay, so with that out of the way, I guess the next order of business is to call the roll, please, Ms. Bazemore.
Yes, Chair Rankin is not here. Mr. Krasner?
I'm here.
Ms. Teetz?
Here.
Mr. Punta?
Here.
Mr. Stevens?
Here.
Ms. Weiss is absent today, and Ms. Comart?
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have a quorum despite Andy's absence and Ms. Weiss's absence. We'll just start off by saying, again, obviously, just to talk about, just logistically, Andy did chat with me, he did chat with Paul, you know, before he announced, you know, his decision. And so, just, you know, obviously, at some point, this is kind of, I'm just editorializing here, but at some point, we should probably invite Andy back to, so we can recognize him for his years of service to the community on this commission, and of course, you know, before that, on the EDA. For more than a decade of his life, he devoted tirelessly to the city, and he deserves to be recognized for that, certainly. You know, we obviously will miss him, we respect his decision that he needs to do, or make for himself, rather. So, I just want to get that out of the way, and I personally think that's important. I'm sure the rest of you would agree that we should try to find a way, despite COVID. You know, at some point when COVID is over, maybe we can get together in person to celebrate, you know, Andy's dedication to the city. But even before that, perhaps, and I know Paul, in the past, we've, you know, at least, you know, had, like what we did for Russ and for others who have left us, we should certainly look to do what we can in the immediate term, but longer term, you know, when we can, hopefully, get back in person at some point, to invite Mr. Rankin back, so we can recognize him for all he's done, and perhaps, you know, bring his family along and recognize him for what he's done for the city. So, I just wanted to get that out in front. On a logistical matter, obviously, what this means, sort of procedurally speaking, you know, based on the planning commission's rules of operation or rules of procedure is that, as of now, technically, we don't have a chair. I am the vice chair. Since I was elected to that position, what we decided we would do, and talking to Paul, just practically speaking, is that we thought it made sense for that I would chair the meeting in the capacity of vice chair, and then, again, taking the place of the chair tonight. And then, since, again, the news was just really announced to everybody today, that at our next meeting, we would go through the business of electing a new chairman. So, again, without having to try to come up and discuss that tonight, I don't know people's thoughts on that matter. We can talk about that, you know, sort of off-line, between now and the next meeting, if anyone has opinions on that. But I figured we'd give folks time to just think about that, and then at the next meeting, which is on what date, Paul, March?
I'm adding 14. March 17th.
Yeah, so at the March 17th meeting, we would elect a new chair. And then, and we would proceed that way. So as long as everybody is comfortable with that, that way of doing, of going about this, that's what I thought we would do, and I've been briefed on the advance materials by Mr. Stoddard. And so, I'm prepared to go forward with that. So if everyone is, we don't need a motion, I don't think, to do that, but I just wanted to make sure that everyone's okay with that. If anyone has an objection to proceeding that way tonight, feel free to voice it now. Otherwise, you know, we'll go ahead that way, and then on the 17th, we'll elect new officers potentially. And so, oh, I see a hand raised. Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, no, I'm perfectly comfortable with the approach that you've outlined. I'm just curious, though, with the annual report to city council, do we have a date yet for that? And I guess, you know, how would, would Brent, would you just go ahead and fill in then for Andy, whenever that comes up?
I can provide an update on this. I actually scheduled with Andy this morning, or confirmed that he's presenting next Monday, the annual report to council, since he was our 2020 chair. So he will be giving the annual report that you guys adopted back in January, this coming Monday.
Okay, excellent. Thank you, Ms. Bazemore. I actually, I was not aware of that, that Andy had agreed to do that as his one last planning commission duty. Well, that's good. So I guess that answers that question. So he'll be able to do that. And so, okay, so it sounds like everyone's okay with proceeding that way. And so, with that, I'll assume the chair for tonight, and we'll move on to the adoption of the agenda number three on our list. Can I get, I don't see anything wrong with the way the agenda is set up tonight. We have our advance that we'll be doing, in addition to some other items that we have before we get to that. So if everyone is okay with, as the way the agenda is presented, I'll look for a motion to adopt the agenda.
Motion to adopt the agenda for Wednesday, March 3rd?
Second.
Great, we have a motion and a second. I believe then we will need a roll call.
Yes. Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Punta?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Weiss, or Ms. Comart?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, so we're going to proceed as the agenda was prepared. So the next item, we have no speakers for the speaker series tonight, so the next item after that is receipt of petitions not on the agenda?
There are none.
No? Okay. I gotta pull my calendar. You just took my agenda away with the screen, which I was reading, not realizing that's on your screen. That's the problem sometimes with the way we're doing things. One second. I'm sorry, the next item on the agenda is adoption of the February 17 minutes. Folks reviewed that, and so, if anyone has any comments or corrections, otherwise, I'll look for a motion.
No move.
Right. In a second, to adopt the minutes of February 17th. Roll call, please.
Mr. Krasner?
Yes.
Ms. Teetz?
Yes.
Mr. Punta?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Comart?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so, okay, moving on. Looks like the next item for information items are any planning commissioners' reports. Mr. Stevens has hand raised.
Yes, I attended the EDA retreat last evening. They covered a number of different things, but a few of them are more of interest to us, so I'll just kind of quickly mention those. One is on the wayfinding project that they have underway. They are close to selecting a contractor for that. Second is, they are looking for new sources of funding for their land banking activities. And this kind of follows on the recent purchase that they made of the duplex over there, close to the tax analyst building. So they kind of view that as a success that they'd like to follow up on. So coming up with the additional resources, so that they can engage in that type of a purchase for affordable housing is something that they'd like to move ahead with. And then the final thing is that they are continuing to look for ways to promote expansion of new office space in the city, particularly for medical use for, by the medical community. And those were the items that I thought were, would be of most of interest to us.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Any other commissioners' report, Ms. Teetz?
Yeah, so I attended the CACT and ESC's joint meeting. I'm trying to think when that was, like last week. Anyway, they met together, so they wanted to talk a little bit about bicycling, and about how to increase the usage of bikes and cycling. They went over some of the stats for capital bike share. Of course, the numbers are down, but there's still been a lot of use of it. And they also went over a lot of the traffic stats that they've been looking at, you know. So they had, you know, someone from the police department come and talk through the number of accidents, and where, you know, obviously, the most dangerous places is like where the bike trail crosses Great Falls and things like that. So it was a really good meeting, and they're looking to increase, you know, multimodal, increase beyond cars, and see more walking and biking, obviously. So it was a good meeting.
Interesting. Yeah, I was wondering about capital bike share. I mean, I feel like, I don't know, there's, I mean, I've seen, yeah, I've seen it go away, I've seen less folks using them, but, you know, maybe with the weather, maybe just, you know, we're coming out of the wintertime, a particularly cold month we had in February. So, but, yeah, I wondered, you know, I'd wondered about that. I'm sure it'd also be interesting to know, like, which stations, which docking stations sort of have been, you know, the best utilized versus others. There's some that seem like, I never see, like, anyone using them. Bikes are always there, like the one by, like the one by the Flower Building is like...
Right, that much.
Yeah, I haven't heard anyone using that one.
Yeah, the number one station, especially before COVID, was Roosevelt and Roosevelt. So that's the one that's a couple of blocks from the metro station. You know, from East Falls Church. So it's interesting that that location does really, really well. But it's not doing as well, but it's still a strong one. Yeah, one of the things they were saying, one of the problems we have is the bike stations are where they have to be based on, you know, they have to be near places people want to go, but we don't really have bike stations where people want to come from. Does that make sense? Like, I mean, there is one across from the East Falls Church metro station, but people stopped using metro, so that didn't, because that was like a big source. People go to the metro, and then they bike somewhere. Or, you know, like, we had one up at the school, and now that school is hybrid, we may see that being used more. But that's, they were just saying, one of the biggest complaints they have is, like, people who live deep in a neighborhood, you know, have, you know, 10, 15, 20-minute walk to come out to the station to get the bike. So, but I'm not sure how we can, I mean, that's one way, the dockless ones are kind of nice in a way, because if people ride them into the neighborhood, people can ride them out of the neighborhood. But, you know, obviously, that has its own other fraught issues.
I've seen a few of, like, the new e-bike, capital bike share bikes, like, kind of around town. Although, there's one or two I saw, just like, you know, like, kind of not in a dock, like locked up on a pole for, like, a couple of weeks. So I don't know. Same with the scooters, of course, which are not, that's not capital bike share. You know, some of the arms and scooters always seem to wind their way, find their way into Falls Church, and, you know, kind of get lost in Falls Church. And I don't like those, like, the scooter, some of them are supposed to have, like, geo-fencing, where, like, it don't work beyond a certain distance, but I think we're close enough in the border that they still work. And so, you know, they tend to wind up here, whether we sort of want them there. And I would talk about that in the past, and I don't want to go down it. But I didn't say too much on that, but anyhow, well, that's interesting. Thank you, Ms. Teetz. Let's see, any other reports over the last week or two? Not hearing any?
I have one, I have one, sorry.
Oh, sorry, I could have got my hand buttoned.
I attended the Legal Women Voters and the CDC's Discussion of Affordable Housing on Sunday at 4:00. And they had a number of people who have been involved in the issue of affordable housing over the years speak about, you know, their recollection of the experiences, or what we, what was attempted or tried. And it was the first of three-part session, so it was kind of a look back at the past. And the next session will be sort of like the current state of affordable housing in the city, and then the third session will be a look at the future. And I think they're doing these sort of on a every few months basis, so stay tuned for the next one.
Good, yes, I think I had heard about that. That's great. Okay. Nobody else has anything? We'll move on. So the next thing is several items of correspondence. I don't know, Mr. Stoddard, were you planning to discuss these, or are these just for information?
A lot of the correspondence items were things that had sort of come across the wires from planning commissioners. There was, there was a report, what is this, Tyson's report? No, Fairfax County approved. The, so this was neighboring jurisdiction Fairfax County voting to proceed with the next phase of the BRT study. There, the map shows the route that's been studied, and that is connecting from Tyson's down into Alexandria, of course, going through the city of Falls Church with a connection to East Falls Church. That same item is being reviewed by city staff here in Falls Church. Of course, getting Falls Church better connected to the regional transit network has always been priority for the city and its coordination efforts. So it's good to see that advancing to the next stage. Commissioner Comart, did you have a question on that item? Oh, okay. And then the other piece of correspondence in here. Commissioner Teetz, I don't know if you want to speak to this, but this was the Voices of the Region travel survey that COG put out.
Right, yeah, we were, this was discussed in the CACT meeting, and I just thought people would find it interesting to look at it. And it just looks at, like, kind of things like, since COVID, what are you doing? Are you riding bikes? Are you using a car? And so it's just like, it's just kind of interesting to see the kind of data that they're trying to pull together. And, but you see, like, the surveys first, and then after that, you'll see the actual results. And just a useful view of what's going on. I mean, I think it's all kind of scary, like, as a region, we have worked very hard to get multimodal, to expand our metro, to get bike share. And, you know, this COVID-19 effect is kind of scary, because we were talking about, you know, metro stations closing, and where people are saying maybe bike share doesn't work. And so, you know, it's nice to kind of, it's a nice kind of look at the data to see what's really going on out there.
Yeah, that was the one that I wanted to comment on, too. I thought that study was really interesting. Thank you for passing it along, Melissa. One of the findings was the expectations for how people plan to get around post-COVID. 53% expected to walk more, 26% expected to bike more, 47% expected to drive less, or take a car less often, which I thought was interesting. And some of that may just be tied to people expecting to be telecommuters more often than not. But lots of really interesting findings in this. And I think they said that the data will be available at the locality level, which would be great if we could get that for Falls Church specifically.
Yeah, and I think the CACT will definitely try to get that. Yeah, and I think that's what I felt, too, is that most people seem to feel like they're going to be working from home more, even if it's only a few days at home, and so they're going to be driving less.
Absolutely. Mr. Stevens, you...
Yeah, just quickly following up on that, with respect to that East Falls Church. I mean, as you probably know, the funding will enable that station to stay open through the rest of this year, but Metro is proposing to possibly close that station, along with about 20 or so other stations, if funding solutions aren't found for 2022. So I just mentioned that, so that, I know I've submitted some comments to Metro indicating, no, please do not close the East Falls Church metro station. But I would encourage everybody to go ahead and fill out their survey as soon as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. Yeah, that's a great point, Mr. Stevens. I mean, I think that's the big unknown, and it is a very interesting study. I read through it a little bit earlier today. Yeah, I think that no one really knows for sure, right, how things will bounce back, you know, how much of, you know, there's a lot of anecdotal discussion about people, you know, working, you know, in the office less, commuting less, you know, how much of that will, you know, play out, you know, and how for how long? You know, obviously, there'll be a long shadow of this, even when it's, you know, sort of the immediate threat of illness is over. And I think, right, we need to be flexible. And it was actually, yeah, it was a pretty interesting survey, obviously. You know, it's good to hear those folks thinking about these kind of things now, to try to plan for that. But I agree with the investment in infrastructure that, you know, that we've done in this region, you know, for years, assuming a certain type of, you know, some givens in the assumptions there. It's, yeah, it's kind of scary to think about, you know, if some of that could be turned on its head. So, very, yeah, very interesting to read that. Okay. If no one else has any other comments on the correspondence, I guess we'll keep on moving along here to Mr. Stoddard's director's report.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chair. One thing that's not written up, but I didn't want to forget to mention it here, it was mentioned in the West Falls Church Town Hall earlier this week. And that is that HIT and Virginia Tech announced that they're going to not proceed with their partnership to redevelop the West Falls Church-Virginia Tech campus. So we have been in touch with them at the staff level. And of course, there's still discussion about coordination on infrastructure investment, including streets and connections to the West Falls Church metro. And of course, we're reaching out to our sort of staff points of contact. It will mod it to ask if there are any implications for their redevelopment. And of course, those things are external to the city. And of course, the city's project was always designed to stand on its own, and of course, get better with partnerships, but the city's project continues to stand on its own and move ahead. The Town Hall was very well received. It was interesting, when the update in architecture was presented, there were no substantive comments or questions. So I think the comment was made that, you know, they've made enough presentations that everyone's sort of familiar with it. There has, I think this is just a heads up for the planning commission. We're going to be doing a little thinking at the staff level about maybe how to get the council some additional sort of support for reviewing the special exception site plan details. I think that was something that was always discussed when there was the transition to this SEE/SESP model that the planning commission would still sort of be asked to play a role in reviewing those details. And certainly, right, a nine-and-a-half acre site plan is a big thing to take on, even more so when it's your first site plan, sort of in the case of the council. Usually, they get to hand those things off to you all. So we're going to be thinking a little bit about that at the staff level, but that's something that may come back around, about maybe how to get the council some more support in reviewing those details. The other items in the report?
Mr. Stevens has to stand up. I don't know if he had a comment.
Sure, I can.
Just a quick question, Paul, with respect to the breakdown of that partnership between Virginia Tech and HIT. What do you see as the implications of that? Is there any sense that Virginia Tech won't go ahead with some type of a redevelopment on their project, on their site?
I haven't been in contact with them, so, right, everything I've got is secondhand. I'm not sure what their thought process is, or even why, you know, this particular iteration didn't work.
Okay.
I think it's something that I'm certainly curious, and I'm going to try and figure out sort of what I can find out and sort of what can be shared.
Yeah, because, you know, I would think that could potentially affect our site, especially if the plans were to falter on the continuation of the commons through the two Fairfax County sites to connect to the metro station. I think that could have a very negative effect on our site.
Yeah, they, on the, on sort of the smart road idea, I think there has been conversation that they're still interested in seeing that initiative go forward, which is, of course, a benefit, making that through connection, I think is beneficial for the street network, and of course, for the nine-and-a-half acres in terms of access to metro, and just the redevelopment of the area. So moving on to the next item. So this is the first written item, and there's, I think there were four items in the report this session, and these are, thankfully, I've got help writing these things up, because they can, they're involved. So first one is a community benefits comparison. This was a product, a write-up, an analysis report, that got done around the time the Broad and Washington project was being reviewed for final action by the council. And what was, the researcher's request was to get a comparison of how the Broad and Washington project compared to others. Emily, are you able to flip to the attachment? Ah, that's the problem. When I title everything attachment, you can't find it. So if you're able to zoom in, what's on the left column is a list of the special exception projects that were approved in the city. It goes all the way back to the Broadway. And then what's summarized in the rest of the columns is the scale and the variety of developer contributions that were offered with each of those. This is a helpful comparison, but of course, you know, every parcel has its unique considerations, and that's in part what the text is trying to capture. You know, which site had had to do utility undergrounding, which one had particularly heavy lift on transportation infrastructure. Of course, not included in here, right, is, you know, which project had good soil that it could sell to other projects, and which one had bad soil that it had to pay for environmental remediation. So I wouldn't say that one was particularly good or bad based on this information alone, but it does give a sense of not just the tax revenues that have come from these projects, but also the community, the wide array of community benefits that have come with them. So that's that's item. If we go back to the director's report, jump to the next item. The Amazon Reach Grant, good news for the community. This is the Amazon Reach Grant that was submitted a couple months ago now, and this was a two-part grant. The first part was to renegotiate to extend the rent control terms for designated affordable units in recent mixed-use projects. The, one of those were first offered by the private side developers. They had a 20-year control term. That's what the city had negotiated for at the time. The city now negotiates for the units to be affordable in perpetuity. And with the Amazon funds, I think that's the intent, is to go back and renegotiate these units that would otherwise expire, and try to get those terms extended. The other, and I say half-year, just meaning the other part. The other half of the, the other part of the grant was an affordable home ownership program. And I think I mentioned this to the commission before, but it's a revolving fund, where the idea is the grant funds are used to purchase for-sale units at a market rate. Perhaps things that are sort of at, or maybe below, the city median value in order to get the maximum number of units. Turn around and sell those at a reduced rate. And that's the first part of the revolving fund, is of course, that the immediate sale proceeds go back into the revolving fund and can be used to purchase more units. The other half of the revolving fund is that at time of sale, the unpaid price of the unit would come back to the revolving fund at that time, and that would also allow for additional purchases of units. If you think about this thing working at a larger scale with additional contributions coming in over time, then it does become a fairly smooth process. Of course, when you're first starting it up with limited funds, it's a little bit clunky, in that you might have sort of a wave of sales, and then you're waiting for some of the capital. clunky in that you might have sort of a wave of sales and then you're waiting for some of the capital to come back before you can make the second wave. Let's see, next item. This is the special exception criteria code update for the special exception process. The council did vote unanimously, seven zero, on updating the city code. It was, the council did incorporate the recommendations from the commission on the purpose and intent of the zoning ordinance. They also incorporated all the commission's recommendations for the secondary criteria. A lot of those were related to environmental sustainability. Those were all incorporated in the primary criteria. They had a similarly long discussion to the Planning Commission on Criteria 1C, the revenue question. Ultimately, they did decide to leave that criterion unchanged from the way it previously was. The reason it's typed up the way it was is that at referral, the words "and residential" was struck. And then when it went back to council, they were put back in. So even though it shows as addition and deletion, it's actually just leaving it unchanged from the way it is. But otherwise, the text is as recommended by the Planning Commission. And that, that does go into effect immediately. So with the current projects that are in, current applications, Founders Row 2, as well as the Atlantic One City Center, staff will be applying the new code. Another one, Board and Commission Review Process Proposal. This, so this was presented at the Economic Development Committee last meeting, last week, and it was well received. Yes, Emily, if you could jump to that. This, you can see that the, ignore the memo head. It went to the EDC, not to GovOps, and we didn't have the date filled in because by the time it was ready to go, I didn't have time to update the memo. But the idea here was that staff, as sort of the switchboard operator for these development applications, was recognizing some stress in the system. That some of the boards and commissions were expressing frustration. They felt like they were being brought into the process late. There were concerns from council that they felt like a lot of community conversation had happened, but then somehow the sort of board and commission referral process sort of being stacked up at the end created a problem for them efficiently moving forward with applications. And it also created challenges on the staffing side in terms of the number of meetings that the case planners were expected to go to and trying to get staffing to all the boards and commission meetings when some of them do meet on the same night or in close proximity to one another. That was adding to some stress on the staff side. So some staff put their heads together and we bound some things around. And what we came up with was what's shown in the chart below. Emily, if you could scroll down to the chart. So this is, so it's a 12 minus zero plus one. So it's a 13-month process. We could probably add a month here, take a month off there, depending on, you know, how particular scheduling works out or the state of the application or turnaround time on comments. But the idea is to add a little bit of structure where council maintains their sort of traditional gatekeeper function in terms of the formal referral process. That's important to the council, and I think it's important to maintain. But at the same time, have a way to at least let boards and commissions know what's going on with these applications a little bit earlier, have the opportunity to provide some comments earlier in the process so that hopefully, by the time it does get around to boards and commissions, that process can be more efficient in terms of applicants knowing what's expected of them early, boards and commissions feeling better prepared for their conversations and being able to have more direct conversations. And that's what's spelled out here. Specific to the Planning Commission's role, part of that would be you all would get an earlier look at the applications, but also the hope is that you all would be able to serve a similar role to what you all did with Broad and Washington. And that is inviting all the boards and commissions to send a member representative to receive that presentation at the same time as you all and provide any sort of early indications to applicants about what they're looking for. And so the direction from the EDC, and of course, we have to confirm this with the entire council, right? The EDC is only a working group or a subgroup of that. But the idea is to pilot that sort of element of the sort of early work session with the Planning Commission, with the two current applications, Founders Row 2 and Atlantic One City Center. So you'll see those in your scheduled look ahead in the Planning Commission agenda.
Looks like Mr. Stevens has a.
Yeah, just a quick follow-on question. Is that EDC meeting, is that recorded and available for us to look at?
It is. And I can, I can make sure that the link gets to you.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, I think, I mean, Paul, you and I, it's funny because that, I mean, this dovetails a little bit on the conversation we had, you know, related to the advanced, you know, as far as, I think it's, I mean, I'm glad to see, and I don't mean to jump ahead of other folks here who want to comment, but I mean, just for myself, I think it's, I'm kind of a process guy, and I've always felt that our process could be improved as far as development review goes in the city. I mean, I think the key is, I mean, we have many, you know, boards and commissions. And in order for those commissions and boards to have the most positive impact on these cases, right, I think we have to look very carefully on how, you know, when they're involved. I mean, I always think that, I mean, I understand the role of the city council is the gatekeeper, absolutely. I understand that's the tradition in the city and it's been the way for some time. But I think, you know, that any board and commission can have more impact earlier, you know, the earlier it's involved in the process, you know. I think, right, in the past, and I'm glad, so glad to see staff and others sort of identifying that, maybe for that and other reasons, that when it comes to boards and commissions relatively late, I mean, it introduces multiple problems. I mean, from a board and commission standpoint, you know, you feel like, well, you know, it's kind of already been decided. It's going in a certain direction. So what's the point of really, you know, fighting hard on something that, you know, the board feels is, or commission feels is a revision that's worth fighting for? Or, you know, even if, even if there's sort of buy-in, you know, right, you know, from an applicant standpoint, they've, you know, it introduces all this uncertainty to them that they could get relatively far along, invest in revisions, pay professionals, pay consultants to try to respond to, you know, council or wherever they feel they need to respond to. And then a whole bunch of boards and commissions give them additional comments late in the game. And it's just, it's very difficult. So I think to the extent boards and commissions, I mean, ourselves, but obviously, the others as well can have input earlier. You know, the earlier, the better, you know, when the project is much more elemental and is easier to revise and easier to provide feedback. Because in the past, yes, I will, I sort of agree that it's been a strange, you know, sort of process the way sometimes things come to us having spent, I don't know, many, many months and gone through 10 revisions before it even gets to us. And then it's like, well, then what if we want to, you know, have some significant, you know, changes to that? It creates an awkwardness and it's difficult. So anyhow, that's just my kind of take on it. So I'm glad to see, step looking at that, I will say, the idea of, you know, I like, I mean, in theory, the idea of having a town hall, so to speak, you know, with 12 other folks and the boards and commissions with us. But again, you have to be careful with the numbers. And, you know, the more people you have, the harder it is for anyone, for everyone to sort of participate equally. So if it's going to be the planning commission meeting, you know, then we really should have a meeting for us. If, you know, I mean, the town hall format, perhaps is a different type of format. But, but I just, we should be careful with the numbers because you get up to a point where you have 30 people in a room. And, you know, again, it's very difficult for each of those folks to feel like, again, they have like sort of a seat at the table. So that's something I think I'd be just concerned about for me. So anyhow, that's my two cents. I don't know if anyone else has thoughts on it. I see Ms. Coma, raise your hand.
I did, and I think Ms. Tista too. I was just going to second what you said. I think it might get tricky with to have a whole lot of people with different issues that they care about in that Planning Commission joint meeting. It can also, might also work well. And then I guess I just was unclear a little bit from this memo, if the backend of the process is going to be different for boards and commissions, will they still receive sort of like a more tailored presentation from the developer on their issue areas? I think that's mentioned here. I guess I was just confused about how this helps with some of the issues that were identified by staff in terms of resource and scheduling logistics. Because it seems like you still are going to have those same problems. Or is the sort of 45-day window to hold the meeting and provide comments longer than it typically is?
So, so the question was sort of process on the, on the, at the sort of after formal council referral and the idea of a tailored presentation. And that's, that's the expectation. So one of the things that planning staff wants to work with the board and commission liaisons on, we're, yeah, double on, the, is trying to communicate with them that their individual board and commission members, I think they'd get more out of their meetings if they were reviewing those recorded presentations, whether it was, you know, the meeting with the council at which the item got referred, or this board and commission town hall with the Planning Commission, that each individual board and commission member should be sort of reviewing that and watching the presentation and getting familiar, at least with the conceptual plan in advance of their meeting night. And then the idea would be that at the meeting itself, that they would have already sort of communicated with the developer through that, probably through the case planner, what are the, you know, the handful of items that they really want to do? I think a positive example was the joint work session that the Planning Commission had with the AAB on Broad and Washington. That we coordinated that at the, at the direction of the Planning Commission AAB. And that was just a work session on the architecture and the two groups were able to walk around each facade of the building and really give some structured and, I think, helpful feedback on that. And we actually cut out the entire presentation on the project at the beginning, which otherwise would have eaten out probably 45 minutes of the meeting time. So that is the intent, to have tailored presentations at the end. In terms of the timing, if, Emily, if you can scroll back down to the, there we go. One of the things we want to do, so right, and I don't know if these months are exactly correct, but in the month two block, this would be when that board and commission town hall would be happening. It's also when the staff liaison and DRC town hall would be happening. So the DRC town hall is actually already sort of par for the course where the technical review staff, and this includes public works, police, fire, housing, engineering. We're all sort of welcome to attend and participate in a discussion with the developer about their project. We want to expand that umbrella to include the liaisons that maybe go, that maybe staff the boards and commissions but aren't otherwise on the DRC. So they got, so they have the same, benefit of the same information. And then, like I said, if, if the board and commission members can be reviewing that, then that means that as it fits on the board and commission agendas, they could be putting this up for their own items for discussion on their own agendas, whether that's in month three, or four, or five, or six. They could be already crafting their comments about what they want to see on a project and sort of, you know, what are their threshold issues that they're going to keep asking for versus, you know, once, once the developer includes, you know, what it is they're looking for, when are they ready to give a positive recommendation?
Okay, that all makes sense. So it would look largely the same on the backend in terms of the meeting with the developer. Okay.
Correct. I would hope that what would happen is that the developer would come in and know, you know, the key questions that the group is going to ask her. And then, you know, she could be ready with a presentation to respond to those things. And then, and then, and then the board could, right, they're not drafting their comments that night. They've essentially had several months to pull them together.
Yep, I agree. I think that's a better approach. It would be a much more productive conversation.
I hope so.
Well, just one more point on that, and we can move on, I guess. But I do think that, you know, you referenced the meeting we had with the AAB. I will say that, you know, to me, that meeting, it's sort of, you know, it was just the personality of the AAB. It kind of turned into an AAB meeting. We got, we got very technical into architecture, which it should, I suppose, but, but, you know, it felt more like their meeting. You know, you have, again, as Ms. Coma mentioned, you have, you know, all these groups that have somewhat of a narrow focus. And, you know, you try to bring them together and, you know, it has a tendency to, you know, get into the, you know, get into the weeds a little bit. So that meeting, I mean, technically, it was a joint meeting, but really, it focused very specifically on the architecture, you know, with a bunch of, you know, architects. And for the planning commission, I felt that, I don't know, I mean, we spent a lot of time, you know, I guess some of us did comment, and that's fine, but I just think that, you know, we need to be targeted about it. And so to the extent we can, you know, again, make sure that the purpose of the meetings are clear, especially there are the more and more groups you bring in, you know, like, again, to try to have a town hall with all 12, is it 12? Is that how many boards and commissions we have?
It's a lot.
So many, I can't, I can't even name them all. But I could definitely name like six or seven or eight. But anyhow, I mean, you know, to the extent that, you know, all those folks want to, want to say something and ask questions, quicker it can get, you know, sort of unwieldy, become an unwieldy meeting.
Yeah, and I don't, I don't know that that board and commission town hall is necessarily geared toward, necessarily a question and answer, but I would think that each rep ought to have, you know, their, you know, their list of sort of three to five items that they can queue up the developer and say, hey, these are the things I'm going to ask about. I do think that there's a value in the boards and commissions sending the reps and having that dialogue in front of each other, because I think it helps when the boards and commissions know what the other boards and commissions are interested in. I think one of the things that's been a bit of a struggle in some of these conversations is that there are boards and commissions or groups of boards and commissions that seem to be sort of isolated from one another, whether it's because that's who they've traditionally had their joint meetings with, or the fact that their staff liaisons are organized in the same city department, that they don't necessarily have those informal connections that the other groups benefit from. Right, planning commission and EDA have already always, have always had a lot of sort of dialogue between them. And urban forestry and ESC have talked a lot to each other. But trying to bridge that, that gap is actually pretty important, and I think this could be a way to do that.
Good point. That's a point well taken. And so, you know, certainly, you know, we can certainly, you know, try, try a different approach and with these projects as a pilot and see how it goes. I'm looking at the list online. Hopefully, we won't invite the towing advisory board, but maybe we should, just in case they have something to add. I don't know if that's part of your list of 12. I'm looking on the city website for all the boards and commissions. That one I'm not as familiar with, but you never know. They might have something to add.
They meet on an ad hoc basis.
You know, the towing board. Well, listen, towing is a problem in town, as we all know.
Well, it's one of those things that it creeps up on you.
Yeah. Anyhow, all right. Well, thank you, Mr. Stoddard. It's interesting. We should see how it works. Okay, moving right along. That was a very informative report. We're just a little bit behind schedule, but not too bad, into our work sessions. The first one, which shouldn't hopefully take too long, is related to public art and a comp plan amendment to, related to public art. So let's see, who is presenting that, Mr. Stoddard? Is it you or Ms. Bazemore?
I'd like to introduce it briefly before handing it over to Ms. Bazemore, who is the, who is the staff planner for this item? Emily, if you could pull up the staff report. Thank you. So this item is before you for a work session. And really, just, I want to just do a few introductory things and a little bit about scheduling before I, before I hand it over to Ms. Bazemore. But this is, this item is before you again. This is a work session. And you'll see in the, in the title block that there are, it's one policy item, but it's broken out into two separate actions. And that, that is because of the state enabling legislation. So this is, this is about getting the city's public art policy on the books. It's been long talked about but never formalized by state code. There are two pieces to make that happen. One is a resolution to incorporate a public art policy into the city's comprehensive plan. The formal vehicle for making that happen is resolution. It's a comp plan amendment. The second item would be done by ordinance, and that's to formally recognize in Arts and Culture District. And so Emily's going to walk through the substance of both of those things. But this is before you for a work session tonight, and you can see in the upper left block, it's before you. We've scheduled it tentatively for a Planning Commission action on both items for March 17th, which would be your next. for March seventeenth, which would be your next, next meeting. So this was at council for a work session this Monday. It's coming to you all for a work session this Wednesday. Uh, and then next Monday, uh, staff is going to be asking for council to, to formally refer these items out to you for action. Um, so the timing sequence here feels like it's got a, gets a little tight. Um, but really it's the, it's the sort of dance to, to make sure the actions between the two groups, council and planning commission, happen in the right order with the legal ads in the paper at the right time. Uh, and of course, as Emily will talk through in her report, this has been seen by, by several boards and commissions over the process of several months. Um, and it really is, um, great to see the support from all those groups, uh, in moving this forward and, and finalizing it. But, uh, I'll stop there, uh, and let Emily present, uh, her work. Um, Emily?
Thanks, Paul. That was a great introduction. Um, so I am going to share, uh, this brief memo to you guys kind of stating the request and then the recommendation of the planning commission, um, and then I'm going to move into the council staff report that they saw on Monday. Um, so starting off with this memo, uh, the planning commission is requested to hold a work session to review a proposed public art policy. The proposed policy is composed of two pieces, um, like Paul just introduced, um, an amendment. Um, that's in addition to chapter three of our comprehensive plan, um, the community character appearance and design chapter to add new policy goals and objectives to promote public art, and then, um, an arts and cultural district map. Um, staff recommends that the planning commission review and provide feedback on the proposed comprehensive plan amendment, um, as well as the proposed art and cultural district map. Um, additionally, staff recommends the item to be scheduled for a public hearing and action, um, which would be a recommendation to city council on March seventeenth. Um, now moving into the, uh, council report, gonna pull that up really quickly, and you guys could bear with me. I have a paper copy in front of me that I'm gonna run through as I'm showing the digital copy. Um, so we'll just skip the requests and recommendation here. We're gonna go down to this comment matrix. So, so you guys saw, um, the draft materials several months ago now, um, as did, um, city council. Both of, um, the groups saw it in a work session. Um, and since that work session, um, several other boards and commissions have seen the draft documents. Um, staff has presented the draft materials to, of course, you all, the planning commission, but then, um, the arts and humanities council as well, the architectural advisory board, the chamber of commerce, the village preservation and improvement society, the economic development authority, the historical commission, and since the time of this staff report, um, the historical architectural review board, um, input from all of these different groups um, is summarized in this comment matrix. Um, it, it's relatively large, so I'm just gonna touch on a few of, um, the comments and staff response. Um, first, I'd like to note that, um, the arts and humanities council, um, as well as the historic commission, um, recommended that we add, um, some language regarding the importance of history to public art and how, um, art can be utilized to remind us of our past. Um, in the revised version of the amendment text, we've done just that, um, by adding, uh, such language to the benefits of public art. Um, we've added this language in particular, um, through public art, local history can be uniquely celebrated, um, therefore illuminating a city's past for citizens and visitors alike. Um, there is great opportunity to utilize public art to educate the viewer on the historic past of the city. Um, we also, uh, saw a similar comment from V P S regarding history. Um, the arts and humanities council had great input in regards to recommending adding a focus on employing local artists, um, promoting local employment and equity, and that can be found right here. Um, so we added language into the document to further help support this statement. Um, scrolling down, let's see. Getting into some comments from the chamber of commerce. Um, based off of their comments, we have added, um, two additional strategies into the revised amendment text. Um, these are considering additional spaces of public art across the city, um, as well as a strategy for creating a registry of public art. Um, and this would be maintained by the H C, um, and updated as needed. All right. Um, moving into the value of public art, um, just want to reiterate, um, this section. Um, the intent of public art, of course, is to connect humans to their surrounding environment, um, through place making and storytelling, um, enhancing community dialogue and generating local economic activity while providing citizens and visitors with a valuable creative experience. Um, the incorporation of art and culture into the public realm establishes a sense of place for both the city's citizens and its visitors alike. Um, moving into the definition of public art, um, as given by the American Planning Association, um, this is any work of art situated in or visible from a publicly accessible space, uh, whether the art is publicly or privately funded, or the space is publicly or privately owned. Um, public art can take the form of visual art, such as murals, of course, or sculptures, or even performance art, such as concerts and theatrical performances. Um, and then in the staff report, we talked some about the University of Virginia student study that was done over the summer. Um, moving into enabling legislation on lines, uh, sixty nine through eighty three. Um, per the Virginia code, uh, creation of an arts and cultural district, um, any locality or combination of localities made by ordinance, or in the case of multiple localities, by substantially similar ordinances established within the boundaries of such localities, one or more arts and cultural districts for the purpose of increasing awareness and support for arts and culture and locality, which is exactly what we are trying to do here. Um, uh, the draft materials that have been shared with the commission are, um, based off of the requirements of the enabling legislation, um, stated above, um, we've prepared two draft documents. Um, the first is, uh, draft amendment, um, to chapter three of the comprehensive plan. Um, we titled it enriching Falls Church, uh, public art section of the community character appearance and design chapter of the comprehensive plan. Um, and then the second, um, of the draft materials is a map. Um, this map can be found on page fifteen of the council staff report and then, um, on page five of the draft comp plan amendment text. Oops. All right. Um, and then here in the staff report, we've included our draft vision statement or B draft vision statement, and then the draft guiding principles that will help us to obtain the goals of the vision statement. I'm just gonna read the vision statement right off the staff report. Um, public art celebrates the city's unique history and culture. It fosters equity in the artistic narrative and incorporates creative place making to support community development. Um, the guiding principles shared in the staff report are the following, um, a commitment to community, a commitment to artists as contributors, a commitment to storytelling, a commitment to equity, and a commitment to the natural environment. Um, moving into our staff analysis, um, we believe that taken together, the proposed public art amendment to the comprehensive plan um, and the arts and cultural district map will serve as policy tools that encourage investment in public art throughout the city. Um, public art is important in all communities and becomes even more so when a city goes through a period of redevelopment and reinvestment. Um, the policies promote consideration of public art, art spaces, and public art, or art programming in both current and future land use applications. Um, it outlines both specific short term actions as well as long term strategies that the city can utilize to work towards its vision and commitments to public art. Um, enabling legislation allows for four components of the public art district, um, including a map that is shared, um, in this document, um, as well as the amendment text, um, zoning and permitting allowances, taxing allowances, and other incentives. Um, these are more detailed below, um, in lines one forty eight through lines, uh, one seventy eight. Um, at this time, staff recommends establishing an arts and cultural district in the area shown on the arts and cultural district map, which of course by ordinance will be included in chapter three, comfort, or community character appearance and design chapter of the comprehensive plan. Um, then this, uh, staff report gets into detailing, again, um, the different boards and commissions that reviewed the draft documents. Again, this is you guys, the planning commission, the architectural advisory board, the arts and humanities council, the chamber of commerce, V P S, the E D A, the historical commission, um, and then, uh, most recently, uh, the historic architectural review board. Um, there is no, uh, direct fiscal impact for, um, adopting the amendment, um, and the ordinance for the map. Um, and then we have a draft schedule which has changed a little bit. Um, it's here in front of you guys tonight, March third. Um, it is still going to city council on March eighth, but we're looking for, um, a second reading on, I believe it's April twelfth instead of March twenty second now. Um, and of course, your recommendation to council will be at the subsequent meeting on, uh, March seventeenth. Um, included as attachments were, uh, version eight of the draft comprehensive plan amendment. Um, and then, of course, our, um, existing comprehensive plan, um, chapter, oh, chapter three, and then, uh, compiled, um, stakeholder comments, which are from the various boards and commissions that have reviewed. I mean, I just want to scroll all the way down to the bottom to show our map. Um, and I want to note that on the current map in the document, um, we have, uh, public land outlined as well as our revitalization districts, and then we, we've included, um, houses, houses of worship on this map. But, um, after further staff analysis, we've decided to take away the houses of worship, um, as an inclusion on the map. Um, so in, in the next iteration of, um, the draft amendment and the map, uh, they will no longer be present. And that's all for my report. Um, so then I'd like to open the floor to discussion.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Bazemore. Uh, um, open it up to folks, Mr. Stevens. Here, you got your hand up. Go, go first.
There we go. Now I think I'm, okay. Uh, thank you for the presentation. Uh, I had a question and a comment, and both relate to the draft comp plan amendment, uh, specifically the strategies and actions section. And it talks about establishing procedures for reviewing and accepting public art. Does staff have a process in mind, uh, at the moment as far as how to establish the procedures for reviewing and accepting public art?
Oops, sorry, had to find my mic. Um, currently, no, but in the staff report, um, we have outlined, um, what enabling legislation allows us to do. Um, so, so here we do talk about, um, murals and how murals, um, are not affect, are affected by the site plan amendment requirements, um, and then other aspects.
Uh, okay, well, my suggestion is that whatever process that, that, uh, that we come up with, it, it does have an opportunity for public input. In other words, it's not strictly an internal staff, uh, developed, uh, set of procedures. Um, but since there's nothing there right now, I guess, you know, uh, we'll have to see.
If, if I may, there was a, the Founder's Row One project did commit as part of their, uh, voluntary concessions that they would do public art and, and, um, uh, uh, staff came up with some recommended process, and it was reviewed by arts and humanities council, accepted by the planning commission. And we did, we did go through that process, uh, for that. Um, so if folks felt like that was a successful model, that's something we could maybe borrow some pieces from.
Yeah, I think there's a lot to be said for that. I, I felt it was reasonably open to the public and, um, there was an opportunity to, uh, provide opinions and have discussion and so forth. Uh, so yeah, I, I would, I would support that. Uh, then secondly, the, the comment that I have is in that, has to do with that same section on the procedures for reviewing and accepting art. Uh, mentions down at the end of that paragraph that, um, two boards, uh, specifically would have their input incorporated, and that's the arts and humanities council and the architecture advisory board. But, uh, just following up on, uh, Paul, on your comment about the process that was used for the mural for Founder's Row, that certainly involved a lot more organizations, and in fact, I recall that you did go specifically, or you had outreach to Saint James, since the, the, the mural for Founder's Row is going to be very visible from, from their, uh, from their, uh, properties, which I thought was very good, you know, to have that input. So I'm just wondering if we should have maybe a comment at the end of, uh, that section, uh, something to the effect of, and other organizations as appropriate, just to, to make it clear that it's not just those two boards, uh, that will have the formal request for input.
I can include that, and I, I'd like to add, um, that, uh, there's a new version of this document that exists. Um, and at the very end of that particular action, um, the historical commission is called out as a reviewing entity for any art that, um, is related to history and culture in the city. But we can certainly add, um, the sentence that you suggested about, um, other organizations, um, that may be deemed appropriate.
Yeah, I mean, not every board or commission needs to be involved in every situation, and I think, you know, having some discretion with staff to, to decide where to reach out. I mean, presumably anybody can comment when it comes, let's say, before the planning commission, and we do our, our public review, but most people aren't going to be aware of that unless they probably pay close attention to our agendas and so forth. So I think really what you're talking about here is a situation where staff would specifically reach out to a particular organization, and, and that's where I think, you know, it should be more than just those two particular organizations. And, uh, that there should be an opportunity to, uh, to reach out to other organizations as, as needed. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms., Mr. Stevens. Um, I believe Mr. Puentez was next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, one question I had was where, when Mr. Stevens just, just went some blam, he did that. On the map, um, um, question was about, what is, what's the practical, um, application of the, of the district, right? The, the language in the ordinance is very broad, right? It says that, that it can be used elsewhere, but there's going to be a focal point. Here's what's the, what's the practical geographic delineation of, of the district? And why not, like, why not just do the whole city?
Um, could you repeat the last portion of that question?
Sorry, and then why not just zone the whole city, call the whole city an arts district? It seems like it's the entire city, but, right, but the, the, the single family residential neighborhoods. So what's the practical application of the geographic delineation of the district?
Okay, understood. Um, the areas that are included, the revitalization areas, um, as well as public land now, not, not the houses of worship. Um, we see these areas, um, as areas that are being, well, in particular, the revitalization districts are being redeveloped. Um, and there's a lot of investment going into these areas. Um, so, so therefore there is the greatest opportunity for public art, um, being that it would be publicly funded or privately funded into these particular sites.
Yeah, that's, that's right. But the ordinance doesn't, this doesn't exclude this being applied elsewhere in the.
Right, right. It doesn't exclude public art from being placed elsewhere in the city. It just encourages more so these areas.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Puentez. Uh, Ms. Koma, I think your, your hands up.
Yeah, hi, thanks. Um, I just had a couple of comments. I think this is great. I'm a big fan of public art. Um, I wondered, a couple of the photos are not from Falls Church City, the make way for ducklings one and the one from Alexandria. And I just wondered if we could maybe think about replacing those with local photos. I was thinking of the transformer boxes that we've done recently, and also, um, I don't remember his name, Robarge, the, like, the art teacher, Mark Robarge, who did the great, uh, art installation on Howard E. Herman, the fungus among us, um, installation that I really loved. Um, but just some more local examples. But just some more local examples, if that would be possible. And then my other question was about the section in the vision statement. Let's see, let me just pull it up. The first one, in the commitment to the community, it talks about, it says, "Through promoting community engagement in this process, it will allow local talent to be discovered and utilized." Just felt a little vague to me. And I wondered if maybe there might be like a more proactive approach to discovering local artists. Have you all considered, you know, developing some sort of registry of local artists who would be interested in participating in public art with examples of their work, their bios, sort of just their, their personal information? I think if we want to promote local artists, it would, it would also be a little more inclusive to kind of just keep like a running list of people who might be interested. My worry is that when these opportunities arise, you just might go to the organization that you know, and they'll go to the people that they know. And then, you know, maybe, maybe you don't have as diverse a pool of potential artists as you might want if you're just trying to be kind of expedient about it. So that was another comment that I had, suggestion. And then the other thing I wondered about is that there's no mention of maintenance of any of the installations. And I wonder if that was something that you all had discussed, you know, how, how the art will be maintained over time. Sorry, I know that was a lot, but those are the three things that I wanted to raise.
I really liked the idea of creating a registry for local artists. An email came in at the very end of last week, kind of asking, are we talking about local artists in Falls Church or the Northern Virginia area as a whole? So I think that just having a registry where, where we could reference would be super helpful for giving maybe Falls Church artists some priority.
Great. And then, did you all talk about maintenance at all? Or was that not something that was discussed?
No, maintenance has not been further discussed.
Do you think that should be something that's in this plan? I mean, if these are sort of public assets that we're investing in. I don't, and I don't, I'm no art expert. I don't know really what's involved in maintaining these installations over time. But just wanted to raise it as something to consider.
Yeah, it could be added as a strategy, a long-term strategy.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Puentez, is your hand back up, or did you just? No, take it down. There you go. That's okay. Just checking. Just checking. I don't know if anyone else has any other comments. I mean, I'll just say, I mean, generally, I mean, I'm gonna just echo the, you know, the positive comments that were said. I will, I will also, I agree with Ms. Coman as far as, well, if we're going to include, you know, again, I think I brought this up last time. We don't, and I'm not trying to knock on our chainsaw artist, because that is pretty cool what he does. But for example, you know, last time I think you had his stuff opposite, like the Bean in Chicago, which is like, again, like at many different levels of magnitude, more significant as far as a work of art. And speaking of maintenance, that one also, I think, had some pretty serious maintenance issues with it. But anyhow, and so, you know, now you have the duckling, which is also excellent. I mean, you know, the bronze sculpture. I mean, obviously, I mean, art is in the eye of the beholder. I mean, I think we should be encouraging more things like the duck, less things like the chainsaw. But I have nothing against the chainsaw guy. But like, for example, like, you know, he also has his, like, his ad in the picture. And I don't know if that's the most appropriate thing for the city comp plan to have his phone number and email address, you know, in the photo. He could probably do his own advertising, you know? Maybe give a plaque. I don't know if he has a plaque on site where he does it. But, you know, like, when we have tree stumps, like, it's a great way to reuse the tree stump and, like, make something positive out of an old stump. I totally get it. But, you know, I do think that we should aspire to, you know, again, a higher level of, you know, creativity. I mean, in art, people probably will disagree with me and say, well, I love the chainsaw guy. And that's fine, but that's just my, my two cents. But it certainly had a minimum. I don't mind leaving those pictures in there. They're local. We have them. I saw he just did some more stuff over at, on my bike, Chimneys, Big Chimneys Park. But we probably should take his ad out of it, just because I just don't think that's, that's best. And to the extent we got Northern Virginia kind of examples, or, or at least put it this way, these things we want to aspire to. And I actually like the ducklings. And so if that's what we're saying, we want to encourage people to do, like, that type of level, you know, of art, then I think we should keep it. But, you know, we should just be clear that these are examples of the kind of things we want to see. So just, just kind of my two cents as far as that goes. But definitely, I think we should just lose his, lose his ad. He can, he can probably find other ways to advertise. And that was it for me. I don't know if anyone else has anything else they want to add. We're hearing none. So overall, but overall, yeah, I think it's, it's come a long way. I mean, I think we've seen this at least one other time. And, you know, I think the changes have been, have been positive. So it sounds like you're, you're getting kind of towards the, towards the goal line on this particular update. And, and I think it is, it is, it is a good, good product that you've arrived at.
Thank you.
The, just to chime in, now seems like a good time. I'm glad it was positively received. If you all are reading through your Falls Church news press tomorrow, you will see that there's a legal ad posted for this to go to a Planning Commission public hearing on March 17th. Always a presumptuous move by staff to, to, to order the ads before the work session. But in order to meet the advertising dates, we went ahead and sent in the ad, I think, yesterday. And of course, even if, if, if you all wanted to, you, of course, still have the option to defer action even on the 17th. But I did want to let you know that those ads should be in the paper starting tomorrow.
Okay, good, good to know, Paul. It's okay to be presumptuous, you know? It was better to advertise and then be able to go forward with the hearing than wait, and then you miss the date. I know that goes.
I could give you an option or make you all wait an extra three weeks. I thought I'd give you the option.
Right. I get it. I get it. Okay, well, let's see. Moving on then, we've reached the, the final item on the agenda, which is our much anticipated and always thrilling, and I don't mean to be funny here, annual advance. Which this year, of course, you know, I was talking with Paul, and we talked about this, is that we used to get food at the annual advance. At some point, the budget got tight. I don't know. Like, when I first started on the commission, I haven't been on here all that long, but we, we got food. We had, like, sandwiches and chips and stuff. And then at some point, I don't know, I think we dropped out to cookies. And then maybe, then we had nothing, and now we're remote. And so it's tough. So now it's got a BYO as far as food goes for the advance. Used to be called the retreat, right? I don't know. We used to go somewhere cool and, like, like, retreat somewhere. And then that got cut out. But anyway, I make, I'm giving Paul a hard time, but, but it is an important thing that we do.
Move from the dais to the big table. That, and I actually put a stop to that because it took 20 minutes to move from the dais to the big table. So I was, talk about efficiency. I, I saved everybody 20 minutes.
Right, so we don't even retreat there. Now we retreat into our own homes. And then we can, and now we can advance forward from there. So, but it is important. And actually, I did notice, Paul, it is in the, our rules of procedure actually say we should have something like this every year. So, you know, you and I were talking about this, and I just wasn't familiar with that part as far as how long we've been, the commission has been doing this. I don't know when that was added to, like, the rules of procedure, or if it's been, it's been for many years that the planning commission is supposed to set, like, a yearly agenda. But I did see that was in there, so.
A long time, because it's had to happen since before I was chair. And I was chair a long time ago.
So there you go. So, so it is something that's a tradition, and it's required. And, you know, and it does say, it's no later than the first week of March. So we're right on schedule, according to the operating procedures, to, to meet our, to meet our deadline to hold the advance. And obviously, this year, we're doing it in a remote format, but hopefully that won't preclude a good discussion. You know, again, as part of this, you know, since Andy was stepping back, you know, Paul and I discussed more about, you know, how we wanted to kind of frame the discussion tonight. And kind of the big comment that I had to Paul, to try to make it a productive discussion, you know? And again, this is, I guess, for me, would be the fifth time I've done it, is that, you know, I feel like we should try, you know, in the past, you know, there have been some years where, you know, we've kind of come up with more of like a, what I'll call a wish list of things that maybe we care about or that we think are important. And there's nothing wrong with that per se. But I feel that, you know, we should try to tie any of those types of bigger picture objectives to real-world ways to implement them based on, you know, both our sort of statutory role as the planning commission, based on staff's workload, based on the council's priorities. You know, I think in the past, you know, we've come up with great lists of things, but without tying it to a way to implement it that year, you know, it can be difficult. And I think there are some very obvious ways we can do that, like I just mentioned. So I think Paul, you know, has tried to, you know, do some of that in response to my comment. And I hope that it will provide for a more, when we're done, a more productive, a more usable object, kind of list of objectives and priorities that we can actually really work at throughout the year because we're tying it to, again, things that we know are kind of already on the front burner as opposed to an idea that's kind of maybe important, but, you know, based on a limited amount of resources and time and the council's objectives, maybe, you know, isn't something that's going to make a lot of progress in 2021. So, so that's kind of where I was coming from. So kind of with that as an introduction, maybe I'll throw it over to Paul to kind of set the stage for how we're going to proceed.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. The, and I appreciate the input and, and direction in getting this ready for tonight's discussion, the always helpful. So, right, so this is, this staff report is here to sort of provide some background and some direction for, for the commission's discussion tonight. And there were sort of three big items as this was written up. First was just taking a look back at what is the Planning Commission's role. The Planning Commission is something of a special creature in the city's board and commission web that you all have some authorities that come from state code and some that come from the city charter. There are a few other groups that are in a similar role. But your powers generally stretch a little bit farther than those of other groups. I'll talk about that in a little bit. The second thing is to talk about the group's annual calendar. We do this probably every other year, that we say, ah, we don't want to get caught by surprise, and we lay out an annual calendar, and then it works out great, and we forget to do it, and then we get caught by surprise again. So it happens every other year. And then, as Brent said, talk about the, the work plan. And there was some, some breaking news from the council. They distributed the final version of their work plan, which, which I'll talk about later as well. Emily, if you could go back up to the, the role of the Planning Commission? Oh, perfect. So right there, starting at line 16. As I mentioned, the, the Planning Commission has some authorities that, that come from state code. They have some authorities that come from the city charter. And I've obviously paraphrased these here. They're not written in legalese. But their items, one through four, first, well, since I came from the long-range planning side, I put it first, is to prepare a comprehensive plan for the community. And with that, I would also lump in small area plans and master plans. But what's referenced in the code is comprehensive plans. And that really is intended to guide development of the community. And you can see that sort of language, that idea of developing and, and, right? The idea that cities don't stop developing. They keep going. You don't, you don't lock them in amber. Sort of what is it that's going to happen in the next five years, 10 years? And comprehensive plans usually have look-aheads of 20, 25 years, sometimes 40, but generally 20 to 25. Number two, capital improvement program. And I think the capital improvement program, I guess I would suggest, from the planning commission's point of view, that, that obviously it's there to meet the infrastructure needs of the day, right? Stormwater system is failing, so let's make sure there's money in there. But I would say that you all, as the, as the writers of the comprehensive plan, I would say that the, the capital improvement program is also a strategic vehicle for understanding what civic investments, what community investments are important to achieving the vision in the comprehensive plan. I'm going to throw out an example in, in a community that's not really relevant to Falls Church, but then sort of play it back to Falls Church, right? If, if, if this were sort of an ex-urban community, and what was included in the comprehensive plan was some sort of, you know, utility line construction out into the greenfields, you all might look at your comprehensive plan and say, wait, why, why are we laying sewer line into the agricultural lands? We don't want to promote single-family style development, so let's not roll out those sewer lines. In the, in the same way here in the Falls Church context, if there's a particular form or style of development you want, then that ought to be replicated in the capital improvement program. I know there was an interest in, right, when the, when the special exception code was updated, there was an emphasis on green infrastructure. And that's something that's being talked about in the stormwater task force. So, right, the idea would be that as the CIP and those kinds of big-ticket items are coming to you, the idea would be to be making your recommendations based on those visions for what's in the comprehensive plan. Number three, reviewing development applications, of course. This, right, these items would be no stranger to the Planning Commission, and these come in different forms. There's special exceptions, comprehensive plan amendments, rezoning, site plans, subdivisions. And they all come with their own rules and, and regulations and allowances. But that's a, that's a major role that the commission plays. And then lastly, this is one that's always been in the charter and the state code. And we've been trying to play this responsibility up a little bit. That is the commission's role in reviewing projects for urban design, not just private projects, but public projects as well. I think it's on your, I think it's on your agenda for next meeting to review 30% designs for a CIP project along West Broad Street that's designed to improve multimodal and pedestrian access and safety. So the idea is to get the commission more involved in reviewing those public projects as well as private projects. So really, those are the four sort of generalized authorities of the, the Planning Commission. And the reason for spelling them out here is because when we sort of eventually get down to that item number three, you're going to see there's a discussion tool that's, that's laid out around those, those general areas of responsibility. I kind of probably could organize this differently. But if we go down to the annual calendar, this is, so this is laying out every first and third Wednesday between tonight and the end of the calendar year. And normally, sometimes the group tries to take a recess in August, but usually the date that really the, the Planning Commission has tried to avoid is the first night of school, which happens in early September. I looked it up in the FCCPS calendar, and there's no overlap this year. So you all could, if you wanted to, still have that first meeting in September. And then if you scroll down a little more, the other things to watch out for are the big holidays at the end of the year. But the third Wednesday of November is on the 17th, and the third Wednesday of December is on the 15th. So you all kind of lucked out. You, you could have all 24 meetings this year if you wanted to. Getting the double thumbs up, so it can only mean, let's do it. The other thing I threw in here, obviously, the agenda is going to be, right, obviously, the agendas aren't going to be blank. But I did try to throw in here as placeholders for feedback from the commission, sort of placeholders for an early work session on the CIP. I don't know how many of those you all want to have. Putting your annual advance together earlier, instead of waiting till March, having it at the end of the calendar year so that it could better inform your annual report, and then just laying a marker down that the goal would be to finalize the annual report in December so that you all are well-positioned to advocate to council for whatever your priorities are, whether they're work plan or budgetary. I'll stop there and, and take questions, because I, I went over a lot.
Mr. Puentez, this is hand up.
Just, just a curiosity question. The four roles for the planning commission that are described in the background, is that, that's just from state codes, so all planning commissions in Virginia have the same board? What was the procedure?
It's state code and, and city charter. You know, the nuances of what commissions do. For example, in Falls Church, planning commissions approve subdivisions. Whereas in some other jurisdictions, planning commission approves the preliminary plat and the council approves the final. So, so there's some variations across localities. But, but in general, those are the four responsibilities of, of any planning commission.
Thank you. I strongly support the idea of doing the annual Um, I I strongly support the idea of doing the annual advance earlier. I think that's very smart to push that into into November. I hope we can keep that on the schedule. The the CIP work sessions, it's it's interesting, the the CIP process seems especially compared to when I was on the commission first time, a long, long time ago. It's so much more, I don't know if just maybe just unique to this year, but so much more um routinized and just polished. I didn't feel like there was a whole lot that we had that we could say about it this year, and and your your points are well taken that it's, you know, these these infrastructure and, you know, public investments have an enormous role to play in how the city grows and develops the shapes of the city. But um, it's interesting to feel like our role is, I don't know, I don't, it's hard to know, but it's really just to kind of confirm um all of that. So I think it's interesting to move this up and up, or maybe there's ways that we can be more um, uh, more ideas at the early, early stages of the project. Some other the comment about the annual advance, do that earlier, I think it's a good idea. Thank you.
There are, there are, and I'm, I'm actually going to bounce this over to you, Tim, just in a minute, because you were actually very successful in um last year's CIP, uh, that certain things happen on annual cycles um in the city that um council votes on its budget in April, and the money becomes available in July. Um, so, and the CIP gets developed by staff in sort of November, December. So if you all make recommendations in October, um, and there's a way to work those into the funding structure, then you all might see that that normally it's out your money for the CIP, but the earliest you all would be able to see that is July. Whereas if you make the recommendation in February and the CIP is already baked, then you're waiting another 12 months. So there's a, there's a value, you know, by making your recommendation three months earlier, you actually get your money 12 months earlier. Um, and and so that's the reason for uh having that conversation in October, that 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 way staff can be thinking about those things. And and um, Tim, the project that that came to my mind was was your LED conversion. Um, that back when we were at uh the Flower Building, uh, I remember you made that recommendation on LED, LED, um, staff uh did some research and was able to work it into the next round of the CIP. Um, but of course, because it was being talked about in February, that meant waiting not until July, but the subsequent July, and 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 now you're seeing the final designs for that and the and the and the pilot being scheduled.
Oh, Tim, I think you're muted if you're talking.
Sorry about that. It's too efficient with my mute before. Um, yeah, I fully agree with what you say there, Paul. And in fact, that's why I followed up with uh trying to to uh get another uh comparable project in with uh electric vehicles and trying to get some type of a plan, excuse me, developed uh going forward on that. Uh, just a little bit of feedback on the agendas that you got here. I think they're they're good. Uh, certainly the CIP uh work session, and what would be helpful there is to the degree that, let's say Cindy, who is still considering options, that we kind of use that timeframe to kind of provide some some uh feedback or be a sounding board for that point in time when there's still options, because it it seems like when the CIP comes to us in the February, March timeframe, it's really just a matter of getting our concurrence at that point. Um, so I I definitely uh agree with the the timeframe there to begin the discussion on CIP. Uh, the annual advance you've got for November 3rd, I guess that's fine. I mean, it could slip, obviously, if 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 we had some type of a more important issue or more immediate issue, um, but it would still kind of serve the purpose, you know, to have that done before uh we get too far into the new year. The only one that I'm not quite so sure about is the finalize the annual report by December 1st, uh, because that is probably, it probably means the staff is working on that somewhere in the mid-November timeframe, so that's still leaving, you know, a fair amount of time before um uh before the year is is completed. So anyway, I just thought I'd provide that feedback, but otherwise, everything else looks fine with me.
Thank you.
Any other, any other comments on that part? I mean, I think, yeah, Paul, I like that, we talked about this already. I think, um, you know, the changes to the schedule, I think, are, you know, again, all in the guise of having, you know, allowing us to be more effective in what we're trying to do, um, I think that that, you know, that some of these changes seem seem to facilitate that. And so in that sense, they're, they're, they're a good idea. Um, I mean, I I I don't think the idea of an August recess is so terrible, but uh, you know, I guess as far as the calendar, I know, like, you always quote, there's something in the city charter that we don't meet one month, like, you know, the world stops turning on its access and Falls Church kind of ceases to exist or something like that. But um, to the extent, you know, maybe the second half of August or something, we get a, get a, get a little break is not a terrible thing. I'm sure staff has to, you know, appreciate a break now and then from the meeting. So um, to the extent we can build that in um to our schedule, you know, um, there's no, there's nothing wrong with that. I mean, I guess now with the virtual world, you know, vacations aren't the problem they they used to be, I suppose, in the summer. Um, you know, I think a lot of us did participate from some remote locations this summer and didn't really make a difference, but assuming we get back to in person again, um, you know, people are taking off in August, um, in general, not a, not a bad idea to consider that, but um, otherwise, yeah, the other changes are, I think, are, have the potential to really, you know, make make a difference for us, and that's, that's a good thing. Um, Ms. Coleman, your hand is back up. I see. Oh, you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now it is.
Same thought about the finalizing the annual report in December 1st. That's just saying it's a little early because there's a lot of the year left, so maybe, maybe you, you know, a a first draft at that point would be good with the goal of finalizing in January. Um, I think we only just finalized it uh last meeting, is that right? So um, that that would, that would be a little more doable, I think, in my opinion. But otherwise, I know this looks great. It's recess.
Yeah, that's a good, that's a good point. I mean, Paul, what what are your thoughts on that? I mean, could, I mean, I think we could push the annual report, you know, to...
Yeah, I don't have a, I I think that's a great idea. The um, yeah, really, all I was trying to do with this was um get the the work session uh sort of in October, uh, not bunch these items up, uh, which sort of made the annual advance happen in November, and then I I I put the annual report December 1st, just because it gave us a slip week, but I I think it's equally effective to do it on December 15th. I I don't think either ones, I think that's great.
Great, okay.
And of course, to the point of a recess, we can certainly pencil one of those in. Um, because if there is nothing pressing on the agenda, we could manage the agenda such that uh maybe August 4th and and September 1st have four items each instead of three items each, and 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 then the group takes takes the 18th off or something like that. Uh, but you're, you're right, uh, to the, to the meeting requirements, uh, the planning commission, uh, I, you're going to hear me say, by the charter, uh, by by the charter, uh, commission is uh is required to hold at least one meeting per month. Um, and I, you know, I don't know where that comes from, but uh, well, so maybe I shouldn't guess. Uh, but I do know that you all are are required to take public comments, so so that, you know, that could be related.
Yeah, I guess they, they didn't want anyone getting lazy back in those, back in 1949 or whenever they adopted the, adopted the charter. No, uh...
Well, I would, I would wax poetic on the fact that the 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 residents are supposed to have a way to petition the government, uh, and you all as a, as a regulatory body, I think, have to be open to um open to business.
Right. Well, you know, you guys are working at City Hall, I mean, you know, they can drop off stuff. Paul, Paul will be there to get it. Come right to your office. But I know, point well taken, Paul, that that that's fine. So, um, okay, well, moving on. Did you want to move on to the next um kind of theme here?
Yes, thank you. So this is, uh, so this section here on the 2021 work plan, uh, the item, and these items in the left-hand column, the the left, the left-side column was populated from the council work plan, and that was uh the final version was distributed uh to boards and commissions earlier this week. Um, that is included as one of the attachments to this, and that the titles here are just the summary titles. There's actually a longer description of of what each of these things uh are and the expectations for delivery. Um, the, and then the column, so the thing on the left, that's, that's from the council work plan, uh, and obviously, the council work plan had more items than just this, uh, but the items, the council work plan identified not only key items to deliver uh over the next year and a half, but also the lead boards and commissions for each of these items. So what's shown here is the items where planning commission was was identified as as the or one of the uh lead groups. The um, the column headers, uh, I took a little liberty here. The, these are uh those, those paraphrased um responsibilities that were listed above, whether that's, uh, and I grouped together land development and project review, uh, mostly because those are the most commonly seen things item, uh, commonly seen items on your agendas. Uh, then I also included um CIP, and I called it CIP planning here, um, because of that idea of how are we connecting sort of comprehensive plans and and CIP, uh, and then your role to prepare the comprehensive plan and associated small area plans. Uh, and so the thinking was that if you all have a work plan item and it fits neatly into one of those buckets, um, then it's, it's sort of clear sort of what, what lane you're operating in, uh, in terms of, okay, well, our product is going to have to be, you know, a zoning ordinance amendment, or it's going to have to be working with staff to get something included in the CIP, or it's going to be having to put a special lens on a project when when we review the application before us. Um, and so, right, each one of these things is going to have a different flavor based on what what kind of thing it is and how it lines up with your, your authorities. The last two columns, there are things that are of interest to the commission, and I think they're of interest to the community. Um, you know, if not now, they they certainly will be in future generations. Um, but they don't necessarily fall under any of the planning commission's sort of clean-cut authorities. Uh, and so the thinking was that there's still a value in having the commission think about those things, but uh, that idea of an advance, how do you move the idea forward, right? It's, it's not enough just to discuss it, you actually got to make it a thing that happens. Um, and so the two columns on the right are really about that, is, you know, is there a topic where the commission needs to be more informed or staff needs to be more informed? Um, right, that's what the speaker series is for, uh, and those are recorded conversations that that can be viewed by anybody in the community as well. Um, or is this something where the commission needs to be lobbying the council? Uh, the council does hold a retreat every other year, um, and there may be some things where uh planning commission and other boards and commissions uh need to be sort of thinking about what is the future of the city and and making their recommendations in that venue. Um, and so that was the thinking, right? As 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 the commission's thinking about the things uh that it's one, supposed to carry out under the council's work plan, and then other items that the commission may be interested in, where do they fit within the planning commission's sort of um abilities to move things forward now versus things they maybe need to lea- lay groundwork for, whether that's the speaker series of the council retreat and try to work on later? So that's as far as I got. I I sort of uh, sort of put the table together, um, sort of based on that, that sort of coordinating call with Andy and and Brent. Um, but exactly where we were going to go with the discussion tonight, I wasn't quite so sure. So so maybe what I'll do is use a facilitator's trick, and I'll pause and take questions.
All right. I mean, I think, Paul, I'll just jump in, and I think that, right, the thought was that, you know, like in the past, I mean, and we, you know, we definitely want to have a sort of a free-form discussion, but in the past, you know, we've, you know, some years, we've kind of like come up with like, you know, things that people put on like sticky notes and priorities. I think the key, you know, to the extent we're going to, you know, try to, you know, harness some of the, you know, creative juices and folks' folks' opinions on these things um is, you know, we're going to try to tie things into these, one of these columns, you know? If there is an idea um that, you know, folks want to work towards or an objective this year um that we'd like to advance, you know, does it fit into any of these columns? I mean, and and the goal would be to try to make it fit into one, because otherwise, if it doesn't, you know, fit into one of those, um, it 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 just becomes difficult for the planning commission based on, you know, what what we are as a, as a, as a body um to do that. So so I was, yeah, I I I like what you did, Paul, and I think it will help, you know, us to, you know, again, for some of these bigger picture issues and policies to tie it back to, you know, on-the-ground work in the trenches um as we go through the year. So um, so otherwise, though, I don't know, I mean, did we think about that? Do we want people to, you know, again, sort of talk about how they feel about some of these issues? I mean, obviously, you know, the the value to tying things to, you know, that are in conjunction with anything city council has come up with, we don't have to be bound by that, but um, the benefit to that is if we know council's already called it one of their priorities, you know, to the extent that, you know, we are, um, you know, working kind of with council on these things, um, then they ultimately, you know, have 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 most of the authority to, 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 for a lot of this, a chance of success uh in advancing those areas is greater. So um, kind of with that, uh, maybe, you know, we can perhaps, you know, begin to talk about it. I see Mr. Stevens just raised his hand.
Uh, yeah, just a quick comment. Uh, I mean, these all, all the items in green are, you know, they're good, they're good uh topics. Uh, just on that first one, infill development, one reaction I have on that one is picking up on some things that uh Mr. Shields has been pointing out in written in his recent reports before city council, and that is the shortage of staff uh to work on some of these projects, you know, with uh the several of the very large projects uh underway right now, whether it's the Founder's Row that's finishing up or uh West Falls or soon-to-be Broad in Washington, that these are large, very uh resource-consuming projects. So it it just strikes me that we, you know, would kind of have to be careful as far as the infill development that uh, that we consider, kind of staff resources as far as how much of that can can be done. So that's just one quick comment on that.
Yeah. Well, actually, Emily, I wonder, you know, for each of these, it might be helpful to, I don't know if there's a way to do like a split screen, or is there a way to to show the full, or I guess you had another attachment where we could see maybe the full wording of these things? So infill development, update zoning code to encourage medium to small-scale infill development in commercial districts. Um, so certainly, updating the SE code, um, I think that's, you know, that may be overcoming a hurdle uh that was certainly holding back some of these smaller sites. Um, right, the need to meet that net commercial square footage test was a, was a difficulty for a lot of these projects, so that alone may make this easier. Uh, there was direction from council uh when they took action on the SE code for staff to look at, you know, what it would take to do uh in in all residential project at a at a smaller scale. So that is something that's also on um staff's plate.
Yeah, you raise a good point, because this work plan was developed over a year ago, I think, in in several instances, I noticed that, you know, we've made progress. It may not have been uh, you know, kind of notated noted in the final column there, but uh, but we have made progress, and I think you just, I gave a good example of one.
Right. But Mr. Stevens, your point is, you know, it's well taken in the sense that, and that's something that actually when Paul and I were talking, I mean, that's also, right, an important thing to recognize is that, um, right, you know, our staff can only do so much in a given year and a given time, and which is why, which is the kind of the whole point, to tie back, you know, sort of things that are our priorities um to, again, tangible, um, you know, implementation vehicles, and recognizing that some things, you know, again, are are going to be sort of longer term, and then maybe things that, I guess, we've said in the past, and we will continue to say we want to advance. Um, but, you know, for example, certain, certainly these policies, you know, you can tie back to land development and project review. I mean, the infill development, there's sort of big-picture concerns we have about, about, you know, how infill development happens and looks in the city. But every time, you know, we get it, even if something as simple as a subdivision proposal, I mean, there is some opportunity to um advance, you know, certain policies and um on, on infill. I mean, whether it's requiring sidewalks, you know, which is within the purview of a subdivision and things of that nature. So um, so there may be, you know, multiple checks you could make in this box, you know, for something like infill. You know, there might be a bigger-picture approach through a zoning amendment or comp plans work, but also, you know, again, a more current planning type of stuff, you know, type of, type of work you could do to try to advance that, um, you know, in, as cases come in, you know, that, you know, so, um, you know, I guess we're not, you don't have to, I suppose we wouldn't have to be bound by, um, you know, putting each of these in one box, so to speak. putting each of these in one box, so to speak. So, I mean, Paul, what were you thinking we wanted to do? I mean, did we want to, you know, I mean, there's obviously, there's this initial list that comes from council. I mean, I don't know if folks wanted to, you know, add other things? If we wanted to give everybody a chance to, you know, sort of comment on that? Or, you know, I don't know, except in the past, you know, we did like, people came up with, you know, sticky, the sticky notes of their ideas, and we stuck them on the board, and we tried to find where there was agreement. I mean, that kind of worked, but, you know, the reality was, there was, you know, sort of, we kind of wanted to do everything. So Ms. Kuma, I see you just raised your hand.
So I have no answers to your questions, but I just wanted to make sure that everybody remembers that there were some specific ideas that were proposed before this meeting, that I mentioned in the staff report, line is 34 to 56-ish. I'm sure that I advocate for her suggestion that the city develop a climate risk plan, like a specific, I think, it feels like at this point we're looking for a specific.
We just lost your audio. We just lost you, Ms. Kuma.
Hold on now.
You're back.
Okay, I think my earbuds have given up. I was just going to say, I want to, I just want to make sure I'm advocating for Ms. Weiss's project are discussed.
The, it's funny. It's funny. Everyone knows the earth is changing, but actually getting people to think about that when they're designing projects is really hard to do. Yeah, but I think you're right, that there's a value in the city thinking about the climate risk plan. I remember when we were doing sort of the public campaign on a transfer of development rights program, one of the things we kept saying was that the city's in the forever business. And that's an advantage, because it gives you certain powers when it comes to financing things and planning for investment and making long-range strategies that, you know, just don't make sense if you're in a, even if you're only in a 20-year plan, a forever-year plan, it's a big difference. The, right, one of the, one of the great examples from just nearby in Arlington is the Quincy Street Park that, you know, decades ago, it was all privately owned, but over the course of time, the county just started buying a parcel here, a parcel there. And now it's the, it's the baseball field for the neighboring high school, it's the glass recycling center, it's a playground pavilion, it's tennis courts, it's, it adds to the library, it's got public bathrooms. It's, I mean, it really is a tremendous benefit to the community. But that happened because someone was willing to start plunking down money, even though they weren't going to see the benefit, maybe even in their sort of generation. So there are benefits to being in the forever business, and, you know, a lot of the private projects that are going in now, a lot of the public projects that are going in now, they're going to see differences in weather, differences in rainfall. So I think it makes sense to be thinking about that. And that was the reason for sort of including those last two columns, that getting people thinking about what are the actionable items that the community ought to be doing? We were, it's time once again for review of floodplain maps and FEMA insurance rates. And that's one of the things we were just talking about internally as staff, is there something we could be doing through that process to maybe protect, you know, future homeowners and future home occupants from increased floods by providing some direction when single-family homes are redeveloping in the floodplain about, well, gosh, what should you be doing to maybe shore up your house, not just against today's rain, but against tomorrow's? So, you know, I think, I think that's the kind of thing where the commission could try and organize some speaker series events and start getting some people in and asking, okay, well, if there is going to be increased rainfall, what should we be doing in our regulations? Or what actions should we be taking when we think about capital improvement program? I think that would, I think that would be sort of the key, is getting speakers in and asking for some specific advice on actions we ought to be taking.
Mr. Stevens?
Yeah, just a quick follow-up on that, that the issue of the climate, well, it really should be climate change risk plan, but there's two components to that that we might want to flush out over time. One of them is the adaptation, and that's the one that we're pretty used to dealing with, with things like stormwater, for example. That's where, okay, something happens that's related to climate, more rain, so we have to do something to prepare for that. We have to make some of our stormwater facilities bigger. We have to look at green infrastructure as a kind of an antidote. So that's all under the adaptation cover. But then there's the other aspect of this, which is the mitigation. And that, and those are the things that we're trying to do, to do to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, because that's the cause of the problem. And that would bring in things like, for example, the gold lead, because we're trying to make our buildings more efficient. We want developers, when they come in and request special exceptions, to know that we're going to be asking them to improve upon the energy efficiency of their buildings, or perhaps install a renewable energy system, because those are the things that are going to reduce emissions. So anyway, I just thought I would add just a little bit of color to that. Otherwise, just looking like a, you know, a pretty simple bullet there, but obviously, you know, gets into an awful lot of detail. But, you know, I would certainly support our looking at that. It's an area that, right now, I think, you know, City Council, we're kind of looking at them overall, they're doing a lot of very good things in a number of areas, but the climate change area is perhaps one that, you know, could use a little bit more attention. And I think the Planning Commission could certainly be a helpful advocate as a result of that.
It's, if I could just jump in, I think this is something they always tell us at every planning conference about how planners are uniquely positioned to solve tomorrow's problems. I'm sure every professional industry tells its membership it's uniquely positioned. The, but I do think that, you know, with the Planning Commission's wide array of responsibilities, you know, the, that, and I didn't mean it to be specifically a Lincoln Avenue Green Streets project, we just used Lincoln Avenue because it was wide. There are other wide streets in the city. It happens to be the case, and it had slipped my mind at the moment, but I'm now well-aware of it, that Lincoln Avenue is actually in the CIP already for roadbed reconstruction, but that went in as a roadbed reconstruction project, and folks weren't thinking of it as a green infrastructure climate resilience project. And just the street trees alone, if there were a way to get those in, that would make a big difference to the walkability on the street. I, you know, on my own street, there are not a lot of street trees because of the way it was developed, and there were days in the summer when I would say, well, I actually can't take anyone for a walk, because, you know, the babies will overheat in the stroller before I can get them to the park. And so, you know, something as simple as street trees can do a lot to place them, to make a place walkable. So I guess, you know, thinking about climate risk plan and the purview of the Planning Commission, I would say with every project, right, it's a fair thing to ask sort of, what is it, what are the future conditions going to be? And what are the design elements that ought to be included to make this thing work?
Yeah, no, Paul, you're absolutely right, and I think that, I don't want me to jump in here, I know, folks have their hands up, but you're absolutely right, and I think, you know, to the extent that, again, you know, as a commission, you know, especially, you know, on the SE projects and on the mixed-use projects, that we may get known that, you know, that's something that, you know, is expected, you know, here when people, when people want to develop here, that we're going to expect, you know, a higher level, whether it's lead, whether it's a higher level of stormwater mitigation, you know, not sort of merely meeting the minimum requirements as if it was a by-right project for stormwater. And some of our projects, you know, have, of course, risen to that level, but making that known. I mean, again, that's something where we can have a very immediate and real and tangible effect, you know, on the shape of the city, you know, when we have these large pieces of land come in for major redevelopments, and they're coming in through that SE process. You know, on individual subdivisions, we can have some luck, but it probably requires some arm twisting, because, you know, they're in more of an administrative, by-right subdivision mode, where they sort of needed, you know, they have to meet the lowest standard, you know, the minimum, but it doesn't mean we can't bring it up every time. I think I've done that on several cases, we should continue to do that. So anyhow, but that's, yeah, that's a good point, Mr. Stevens. Mr., I don't know who was first, so I'll just go with Mr. Puente's, and then we'll go back to Ms. Kuma.
Well, I think you addressed the question. It's not, I was confused, I think, about the items that start on line 27 about our priorities versus work plan that starts on line 65. And the items on the table are the items that are, they're council work items. But I think, like what Ms. Kuma said, that it's, this is something, you know, climate was something, something we talked about at every meeting, right? It does seem to manifest itself in every, everything that we do. And so I was going to, you for, it seems like something that does go all across the board. But I think you just addressed that. And I'll put it in another lens too, which is this piece on equity, which is something that we talked about very specifically as part of the CIP plan with the citizen city managers, the lens that she was applying, that I thought was a great first step. And I thought we committed to climate as well, or at least recommend to council. So, you know, I don't know what the answer is to this, but I think I'd like to see that manifest itself and kind of across everything that we do. I think putting these in just these different buckets, I don't know, I just don't feel like it gives it the, for each of these things. I think there's so much multi work that exists in these different columns as well. I don't know what I'm saying there, but.
No, I hear your point, is I think, I think you're right on some of those topics. And obviously, on climate change, on, you know, energy efficiency, I mean, those are things, right, that are immediately important when we're reviewing a current project. They're obviously things that are going to be woven intricately and integrally into, you know, the comp plan and the small area plans. So in that sense, yes, there are some of these topics that are, you know, we can be working on, you know, at any phase, and whatever we do. And I think to some extent, we, clearly, the green lens is something that I think we, you know, we apply to just about everything. You know, I think, you know, the question is, you know, having impact on that. I mean, I think we all sort of subscribe to the notion that it's, we should be pushing for it. Question that becomes, right, how can we, you know, given what Mr. Stotter just said, that, you know, council seems to, you know, they have a long list of priorities, and, you know, maybe isn't pushing that as much as other priorities, as they certainly care about it, and it's important to them, but, you know, where can we have an impact, you know? And again, knowing our role, I mean, part of our role obviously is recommending many things to council. We approve a few things on our own, we recommend a lot of things to City Council. And so to the extent, you know, we can, you know, going to identify those areas where we're making these recommendations that council ultimately has to adopt, that we make it very clear where, you know, on those issues. I think that, you know, I mean, I think that's kind of what, you know, Paul and I were thinking on some of this stuff. It doesn't necessarily have to be relegated to a particular box, but where can we have the most impact on advancing a green type of agenda? And, you know, and looking at a climate, you know, action type of agenda, climate change agenda. So I think, you know, there are some targeted areas that where we can have the most impact in the city, you know, given where, you know, what we do.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think I would just, I would argue then, based on that, that at least that climate piece and the equity piece, that the CIP planning box is checked for both of those.
Right, I agree, I agreed. Ms. Kuma's hand is now down, so I guess that was a false hand. So I guess, hopefully, Paul, and people are taking, I assume it's Bazemore or somebody is taking notes and/or will, you know, can, because obviously, we're not, you know, unlike other years where we've kind of like, you know, actually like tried to, you know, formally survey the group. I mean, I mean, is this, is this format kind of working as far as, you know, having it more of a discussion?
Yeah, I think this is working. One thing that may be helpful, the, because obviously, I don't want it to be anyone to be sort of surprised when we put something on a work session item, and we say, here it is! And you say, ah, that's not what I had in mind at all. That's, that's not a good experience for anybody. You all are disappointed, staff is confused, and usually, they're looking at me like, Paul, you just set me up. So let's, let's scroll down, I guess, to the list of items. So infill development, we saw the definition for that, and I, and I think, you know, staff is going to see what we can do, a little bit of research. We've started some phone calls, and we're trading voicemails with folks on, because there are people in the region that are finding ways to do infill development, you know, where they find a place to put four townhouses, eight townhouses, 30 condos, 40 condos on lots that used to be something else. I can tell you, in my early phone calls, usually, the way that's getting done is that they have zero parking spaces on-site or one parking space on-site. These are not the kinds of projects where they're putting in two parking spaces to a townhouse, or even one and a half parking spaces to a condo, they're putting in zero spaces. And that's the way they're making the numbers work, because I think one of the challenges, you know, people look at garden-style apartments, and they say, wow, what a great density. Why don't people build those anymore? Well, because you can't meet the parking numbers and build a garden-style apartment. You know, modern parking numbers would tell you to pave the whole lot, and then you've lost the charm of the development. So, and you can't excavate a four-townhouse project, so, to do underground parking. So that's, so that's a challenge. East End Small Area Plan, we're thinking about sort of a typical review process there. And for folks that aren't familiar with the geography, that is predominantly the Eden Center, but as well as immediately surrounding commercial areas. We don't really have a set date for a public kickoff. And before we get that far, we'd certainly want to make sure that the property owners know that we're thinking about something like this, and ask them sort of what ideas they have for their own property. Obviously, nothing happens if you don't have the landowners interested. Preserve existing, so, oh, so East End Small Area Plan, that would probably follow the same typical timeline of being sort of a nine-to-12-month planning process from the time it publicly kicks off until it's probably ready for final action. Preserve existing affordable housing. Emily, can you jump to the definition for that one? It's got to be in here somewhere. Okay, "Adopt practical strategy to preserve existing market rate and affordable housing, such as the Fields, Virginia Village, and others. Seek Amazon Reach grant funds through Virginia Housing." Well, so we can declare success on having received the grant funds. I think the other thing that had been out there, and this is something where maybe it could be a speaker series event, that there are communities, Arlington, I think, is an example, where they adopted changes to their comprehensive plan and their future land use map to sort of call out some of these housing forms that were, you know, market rate affordable or near-market rate affordable, to try to protect those from any sort of redevelopment process that would move the bulk of the units out of the affordability demand. So that's, I mean, that's something that the city could proactively do. It would take some staff work and some research to get done. That's not in staff's work plan at the moment. But I think that's, that's sort of the first, you know, strategy that could be taken into place. There was also the technical assistance grant that the housing staff went out for and won for sort of an affordable housing strategy. And one of the strategies in there was adjusting the city's development regulations to more tightly control redevelopment of those properties. Existing affordable dwelling units, so I think that would be along the lines of renegotiating the terms. Right in here, it's specifically calling out, well, which properties could the city sort of negotiate for? And really, that's based on which units are coming up for the end of their term. Equity, let's jump to that, just because obviously, equity doesn't sort of mean anything as a one-word. Equity. Let's jump to that just because obviously equity doesn't sort of mean anything as a one word description. Evaluate all. It was at the bottom of the screen there. There we go. Evaluate all city programs, policies and appropriations through the lens of racial and socioeconomic equity. Have board and commissions report back by end of March on their ideas. All right. Well, you've, you've got 27 days. I'm not really sure what's intended by, by sort of, I don't know exactly what a formal report would look like. So that may be some, some questions that just planning staff has to. Work with the city manager's office on to, I guess, understand what the, what the council's looking for there. Sidewalk plan and protected bike lane. I might put these in the same bucket. So. So I, I know Melissa, you were reporting on the, the joint work session of the. ESC and the, and the CACT taking on this topic. And I know councils started appropriating some money for a sidewalk plan. In the, in the next couple of years in the CIP. And I think one thing that I might just suggest is that the city. Does have an adopted bike master plan. It did try for a citywide. The community did try for a citywide bike and pedestrian plan a few years ago. Which ultimately didn't get adopted. I, I wonder if. There might be maybe a different way to go about this and that might be instead of sort of a, a 20 year plan or a 40 year plan. What might work is to say, okay, if we had $150,000 a year for the next three years, what would we do with it? I think the, and I guess I would lean on a recent example where I think the city council had appropriated. Maybe $80,000, $100,000 for what I called the sidewalk missing links project. Staff from a couple of departments sat around a table for an hour. Bounced around some ideas, came up with a recommendation, shared it with council. They swapped out one of them and then that's what got built. So that was, you know, it took hour and a half of combined staff time. Multiplied by the number of people involved and then one council session and then we were done. We had sort of figured out what to do with $80,000. Whereas if that had gone through a formal planning process, right, you're, you're talking six months later to decide what to do with $80,000. So, so that might just be a more of a strategic approach of saying, okay, if we've got X dollars, what do we do with it over three years or something like, something along those lines? I don't know how, how people feel about that. That'd be a good one to get feedback on. I did not sell it very well. No one's even come off a mute.
Anybody? You're, you're.
I think the process is, is good then. Like the way you described it, I mean, doing something in, in an afternoon as opposed to six months. Obviously makes a lot of sense to me. I'd love to see you have more opportunities to do, but.
I, sorry. Go ahead, Tim. Sorry.
Okay. Well, I was just gonna say any sidewalk addition is a good thing. So I would say. Yeah. If, if the choice is, you know, getting something done quickly. And perhaps not with a complete thoroughness that we typically like to see in something like this. You know, I, I can certainly see why that would be, would be well accepted. Go ahead, Andrea.
Okay, sorry. Um, I guess, yeah, I, I would agree. I thought it was, you know, that the, the missing links that went in over by TJ have been really helpful. So definitely better to get something in the ground than not. But I guess I, I don't know. I, I sent some lingering like. I have for a while, I don't know, angst about that PED plan, which I believe was 2011. Is that right? So 10 years ago now, which, you know, I feel like we're in a different place than we were. So it may be possible to actually look at creating a PED plan. Because I think a lot of the strategies and goals that we would have for that would help kind of move some other, maybe bigger projects along in the future. So I just want to encourage you to not give up on the PED plan.
The, well, I will say that there are policy guidances that, that, that the community could draw on, right? The, the safe routes to school plan is on the books. The small area plans are on the books. You know, so, so some of this is, you know. I guess I would say another reason for advocating the strategic approach, but I, I do think the city needs an overall sidewalk plan. You know, it's hard to find a community that doesn't have a road plan. You know, there is a street that goes to every house in the city, but the same can't be set, often two lanes of it. But you can't say the same for sidewalks. And in fact, what's on the books today says that if you got a sidewalk on just one side, that's enough. But I don't think anyone would say the same thing about streets. The, so definitely not a reason to give up. There is sometimes a value in the strategic initiative of just knitting together things that, you know, the, the safe routes to school says we should do this. The small area plan says we should do that. By the way, I got this phone call from someone who pointed out there's no sidewalk in front of these two, you know, historic markers, like we should probably start knitting these things together. I should probably throw in a pitch here for the Tinnerhill Historic Site and, and the value of getting a sidewalk link to that site. Right? Obviously a great sort of regional investment to make that happen. Now we just gotta get people there. Protected bike lanes could in some way be the same thing that, that some of those are going to be sort of opportunity driven. The other thing I would, I would push for. Is maybe going back to some of the things that were in the adopted bike plan, which were that sort of when maintenance was going on. That bicycle facilities ought to be included just as a matter of course versus a, versus a special thing. You know, the annual paving program is a good opportunity to pick those things up as well as. Sort of larger roadbed reconstructions or even intersection projects, right? Intersections are always the hard thing. That's, that's where everything's coming together and crossing paths. So. You know, giving special attention, you know, when those, when those intersection projects are coming through, well, how are we incorporating and accommodating all modes? Southwest and I. I, I don't see it listed. There, there was a public comment that came in while your, while your public comment period was still open. And I did confirm with, with, with the writer that, that they wanted it. Shared with the commission. So I'll go ahead and, and, and read it out because that's, that's what they, I think, asked me to do. Let's see, looking at the posted document, annual advanced staff report, the section titled priorities zoning entitlement. What is the intent of the zoning ordinance review and a gentle density? Is this a way to allow granny flats? I am strongly opposed and will get those I've talked to voicing their objections. Please stop this now. The, the, I think the exchange was much more cordial, but I, I, right, certainly there's some severity in the, in the words. I, right, I would think with all these things, where are the commissions getting involved in a matter of. You know, planning policy and, and where it could potentially affect people's houses or their neighbors or their neighborhoods, right? People. These are, these are charged discussions. So, you know, all these are going to be, or have the potential to be fairly weighty. South Washington pedestrian improvements, that's, that's already underway. Not only the, the project that's under construction now, but as well the, the grant application that went in. To extend some of those improvements further along the corridor. Walkable Broad Street, this is the project that's going to come to you in your work session next week. In terms of reviewing the 30% designs. And I will say that that was a, I thought that was a positive experience when you all looked at the Oak Street Bridge project. That you all did make comments on, on relocating the utility pole and that's something that not only staff heard, but council heard as well. And so I understand that is being folded into the design of, of getting the utility pole out of the sidewalk, which is, which is a good thing. Emergency preparedness. You know, this might be something where, where the planning commission could weigh in on that climate risk plan. Emily, can you jump to the description of that? Conduct training with city council on meeting safety and planning and preparation for natural and manmade disasters. I, I, right, obviously. I think when this first drawn up, was drawn up, this was about sort of, you know, how to use the new chambers and the, the layout of the new building. The, but I think here, thinking about, you know, so much of hazard planning is, is not. Right? Obviously people want to know what to do during the disaster and after the disaster. But people ought to be thinking about, well, how do we not get into the hazard in the first place? The, it's funny when you talk about even travel and, and safety and security. I, I remember. Years ago, when I was, where I was going to the annual Transportation Research Board TRB conference and it was in downtown DC. And there was a snowstorm and there were these awful reports about, you know, how it took people 13 hours to, to drive home because there was a problem on Rock Creek Park. And I was staying at a hotel a couple of blocks from the conference and I pleasantly walked from the conference to the hotel. And that was not a hard thing to do, even though it was snowing. So, you know, some of the efforts around multimodal transportation are also a resiliency aspect. That, you know, walking is one of those things that works even when the weather's a little rough. The other thing is thinking about sort of what is the, the city doing to make sure its infrastructure is resilient? You know, to some of the storms and the, and the expected changes in climate. So. It does seem like that could be another item to think about in the speaker series of sort of what our community, right? Certainly there are great examples. In the southeastern part of the state of how people are responding to climate change that, that very much is, is, is right. They've got. They've got tidal flooding in a lot of communities in southeast Virginia and they're, they're having to take actions to, to deal with that. I think the last item listed, oh, this is the Community Facilities and Utilities Plan. You know, a lot of this is thinking about, okay, we've got a new demographics chapter on the book, books that, that talks about expected population increases through the year 2045. Does the city have the right set of facilities? City have the right set of facilities to, to, to prepare for that population growth? Is it planning for the right number of community centers? Do we need a second one? We're going through a library renovation now. Do we need a second reading room somewhere? Do we need to be thinking about another school? Not necessarily a new high school, but some other school facility. Right? Does the city have the right number? Does it have enough community housing? Whether that's special needs housing or other facilities, right? The Miller House just got created and that's a wonderful facility. Does the city need another one? To meet the needs of, of, of the entire population. So that's something that's worth looking at. Planning staff did flag it when we sent in our budget narrative that there's. It's a, it's a special skill set that would pull together a plan like that. And we don't have that in-house today, so we need to go outside. City staff to get that done. And we don't have budgeted resources for technical consulting. So if that is something that the community wanted to get done, we'd either be looking for some sort of technical assistance grant. Or some sort of unspent funding at the end of the year to try and procure a consultant. And that can be a successful strategy. That's actually how we got Lisa Sterdivant and Associates to do our demographics chapters, that we had some unspent funds. And we were able to, to get her under contract at the end of the year. But it, that's just something that planning staff will be on the lookout for is, is a way to deliver that. Because it's not currently budgeted. I talked for a long time. There are some blank lines here. And the thought was to get input from the commission about sort of other things and, and, you know, really. Because it is sort of a stretched budget at the moment and work plan. The thought would be sort of to get some, some input from, from the commission on speaker series that you all want to line up. We've talked about climate resilience. We've talked about housing. I don't know if there are other items that you all want. Planning staff to, to go out and find speakers for, or maybe you've already found speakers and you just need to, to, to get you an agenda date.
Looks like, looks like you're picking the speakers. I'm sure. You have thoughts. I mean, I'll probably ask me colleagues that could probably be interesting to, to hear from and some of the work that you do, I know, but. Some people come up with names, you know, after tonight, they can certainly, we're, we're open to all. You know, any, any folks that might have something of interest, you know, that would fit with our objectives and our, our policies, you know, certainly could be interesting to, to hear. We've had some very good people, you know, over the past year, even with the pandemic. Mr. Pointes, hands back up.
No, sorry. I mean, a couple of things that, that kind of respond to the current moment. I mean. You know, what do places look like post COVID? This is something obviously that comes up every day or, or cities coming back. Are people going to be all public meetings? These are obviously hyperbolic things, but there's also a lot of prognostication about how we plan for the city of, you know, the, the near future. So. Be interesting to see. I don't know who can talk about that, but I suspect that that's going to be a cottage industry that emerges over the next. Months for sure. And there's also an awful lot too on, and I know you all have seen this, on planning and, and, you know, how it can be much more responsive to the social inequities and the racial. Challenges that this nation has been struggling with over the last year. There's a bunch of really good. Speakers that are probably hard to get, but I don't know if we're still going to be virtual. I was like, Tameka Butler, I know who had super high demand, it's probably not her, but. There's an awful lot of folks who are, who are talking about this stuff in very, very different ways. It'd be really illuminating for us to hear.
Point, Mr. Pointes, I, I agree with that. So, and maybe Paul, you know, maybe, you know, we, if we come up with other, other, you know, specific folks, I mean, certainly, you know, Paul is. Always, I'm sure, open to hear suggestions of people that, you know, would be good and, good and would be willing and available to, to come and. And, and, and talk to us. And I don't know, Paul, if you already have identified any other speakers for, for this calendar year over the next couple of months.
I've got one. It's a little off the track of what we've been talking about, but. I've been able to, to, to make a, a contact with the folks that run the Roslyn bid. And I know that's always been of interest to the community about maybe how to get some activities and some programming in the downtown areas and, and, and what is it that bids do? And that might be part of the, the, the post COVID world is sort of what are they planning for? So, so we might ask them to, to sort of talk a little bit about that.
And while you mentioned that, actually reminded me of another one, maybe somebody from the Crystal City bid to talk about Amazon, what's happening with, with that.
Yep.
All the time and I don't, I don't have a clue. Just what I read in the page, sure that there's. I think the Crystal City gentleman, I can't think of now, speaks on this a lot.
Absolutely.
I guess, are, so are we looking for, you know, any, anything that's not listed here that folks. Want to, would want to add. We talked about, I guess, the climate sort of issue already. Right? As something that it sounds like we wanted to add. I mean, that wasn't right. That's not, that's not already. On there specifically. So, so sort of perhaps that, that issue I heard earlier on is something that has, you know, seemed to have universal. Buy-in from folks, you know, that we want to advance across, you know, everything we do. So I might, I might, you know, so I think we should add that. Were there other things that folks wanted to add to this? Didn't already discuss. And I guess Paul, I imagine you will provide us like, you know, once you or Ms. Bazemore or whoever. Kind of sift through our ramblings tonight and try to maybe fill in, fill in the blanks here and, and give us a kind of a. You know, a more cohesive, you know, summary of what we talked about. Is that, is that sound doable? At some point in the future, near future?
Yeah, I think, I think what we're going to try and do is merge. It, I will say in some ways, it's, it's very helpful for staff that, that the council's been directive with the work plan this year. Um, cause I think in the past, we were trying to sort of maintain a council work plan and reports on that, a, a planning commission work plan and reports on that. I, I think it'll be sort of a unifying structure and we can, we can sort of. Um, by reporting through one document, the council work plan, we, we can clean some of that up. But I, yeah, we'll figure out sort of something to get this all back to you. Um, whether it's, uh, sort of a slimmed down version of the, the, the council's work plan that sort of focuses on these items. Um. And sort of highlight sort of, okay, when are we gonna, is this like an ongoing thing that we're gonna be looking at with each development review? Or is it, um, sort of a specific item we're gonna put on the calendar? Uh, we, we need to figure that out. Well, I guess that's a question I, I should ask. I, I think, um. I think the manager tries to do quarterly updates to, to the council, uh, on its work plan. And if that all works for you, I think we could probably just try and get on the same cycle.
Quarterly updates, yeah, I mean, I think that could be helpful. Um. You know, have we, also just to keep, uh, to keep it kind of fresh in your mind, I think you mentioned sometimes the council even comes up with a work plan. And they kind of shuffle it or file it away and, and, um, you know, you kind of focus on what's like the biggest emergency of the moment or the most pressing issue. Um, you know, I think some of these things, right, are just again, things that we just need to keep in mind as we're reviewing these projects. Um, you know, both the more, the more immediate stuff and the more long, long-term stuff. So, yeah, having some updates periodically to keep it, keep it fresh. Uh, because I think it's some of these things that we talk about, yeah, every, every, you know, some of these things have come up multiple years and we'll continue to do that. But, you know, to the extent we can see if we're making progress, um, you know, I think it's helpful to, to review that, sure.
Mm-hmm.
So, let's see here, it's, it's five after ten and I don't want, you know, we don't need to prolong the meeting longer than is necessary. We're kind of, you know, it's been, it's been a, a long evening already, but, um, you know, was that kind of, that, that we kind of hit the points of the advance, Paul, that you? Um, had, had sort of laid out?
Yeah, I think, uh, if we, yeah, if you go back up to the top, Emily, I think we hit the three items we wanted to get to. Sort of, you know, revisiting the role of the commission, taking a look at the annual calendar and, um. Uh, and then, um, you know, talking about sort of what's in the commission's work plan for, for the upcoming year.
Okay, good, yeah, so it seems like we, you know, we had, we had a good discussion. I know, you know, it's, it's doing it in this format and with no food and no, you know, it's, it's, it's tough. But, uh, I think, you know, I think we, we, we had a good discussion despite the, uh, the format that, that we're, that we're in this year. Um, so, so with that, again, you know, um, uh, if there's nothing else that folks wanna mention, bring up. For the good of the cause for tonight, then, um, I'll give folks a going once, going twice. If there's nothing, then I guess we will, um, that was the last thing on the agenda, Paul, and we will, we will, we'll wrap this up and we'll adjourn. Uh, for tonight and, um, see everyone back in two weeks. So, I don't hear anything, so with that, I guess I will, I will adjourn the March third meeting. So, thanks everybody, thanks for, for, uh, participating tonight and we'll see everyone on the seventeenth.
Round two.
Good night.
Thanks.